Good evening and welcome. Could the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Cormac.
Here.
Councilmember DeBois.
Here.
Mayor Phil Seth.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Here.
Councilmember Niss.
Here.
Councilmember Koo.
Here.
Councilmember Tanaka. Seven present.
So, the first item on the agenda is a closed session with two topics. One, a conference with labor negotiators, and the other, a conference with real property negotiators. At this time, we'll take public comment where members of the public may speak to the closed-session items. Are there public speakers? Yes, looks like. So you will each have three minutes, and the first speaker will be Margaret Atkins. Welcome.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Margaret Atkins, and I am the chapter chair of the SEIU bargaining unit. First, I want to congratulate and welcome Allison Cormac to council and recognize Mayor Eric Philseth and Vice Mayor Adrian Fine in their new roles in council, and to congratulate Ed Chakata as our new city manager, and to thank all councilmembers for their services, past and present. Thank you. I started with the city almost 24 years ago, and at that time, it was very difficult to get a position with the city. Vacancies were few and far between, so when I was offered a position, I considered it an honor and privilege to be working for the city that was known as the leader in so many fields. Palo Alto was a city that other cities wanted to model after. Speed up to present, the city continues to be a leader, and they can now add leader vacancies to their list. The local government's vacancy rate average is less than 5%. Palo Alto's vacancy rate in our bargaining unit overall is 14%, almost triple the average, many of which have been vacant for years. If we look at individual workgroups, dispatchers have a vacancy rate of 30%, a 24/7 operation that services our community and staff where time is of the essence because lives depend on it. Water quality control plant operators have a vacancy rate of 15%, another 24/7 operation that our community depends on. The UAC commissioners were briefed on February 6th of the utility vacancies with focus on the electric operations, which has a 26% vacancy rate. The watershed protection group currently has one vacant position, however, the one vacant position has seen three new staff members come and go in the last few years. All three voluntarily left during probation to accept positions that offered higher compensation. Vacancies hurt the remaining workforce, the organization, and the community they are hired to serve. Staff take on heavier workloads to accommodate the work, but at what cost to their health or safety or the quality of life. High and extended vacancies increase time off due to stress and burnout. Vacancies hurt the organization. How much time is spent and money for recruitment, for training new staff, for safety-related costs? Is the city in danger of violating any state or OSHA regulations? Are the services we offer to the community suffering? Is there a danger to the public because we are short-staffed? The high vacancy rate is not something to be proud of for anyone, and we are urging the city council to address it. We ask members to fill out petition cards to share with council their concerns and hopes for a brighter future with the city. I would like to present these to council tonight. We will continue to present them to council as they come in. I hope that you take the time to read them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Ratu.
Good evening, Mayor, honorable members of the council, executive staff, ladies and gentlemen. 20 years ago, Jay Rounds, who was a HR director, actually negotiated a contract that seemed very generous. The group that I worked for got a COLAS 10 realignments up to 21%, but more importantly, we got the 2% at 55 formula for retirement. I think that was done basically because of the issues that we now are facing, which is recruitment and retention. So soon thereafter, in the very next contract, we started talking about sustainability. This was around 2003. Lalo Perez, who was then with ASD, came to us in a very contentious negotiations and actually talked about the sustainability of the formula, of the benefit, the fixed benefit we had. And so through very many long days and nights of talks, we agreed to actually, for the first time, limit healthcare, the Cadillac Plan of healthcare, to 83 members. It was the first time we had created a tier system. But not only that, we also decided to change the five-year vesting plan to a 20-year vesting plan. This was done basically for sustainability. Now, the curious thing, in 2007, the city representatives came to us and proposed a 2.7 formula. There were many attachments to it that we didn't agree with, and quite frankly, what we had asked for was a COLA, a generous COLA, I think it was 5, 5, and 5, but we had rejected the 2.7 formula, not because we could see what would happen eventually, but it just seemed like a lot of cost to us. They were proposing that we start paying to our portion of the retirement, which the city was paying at the time. We agreed to the formula. It was a good formula for people that were retiring. An example of that would be a 30-year employee with a 2. at 55 would get 60% of retirement. However, the 2.7 would be bumped to 81%, which is a huge generous benefit. Now, in 2009, when we had our next negotiations, sustainability was really and truthfully the question. How could we continue to give these generous benefits at this huge cost to the city, to our taxpayers, to employees? Well, the city manager at the time, the recently retired city manager, proposed that we create a second tier of employees. We actually declined that, and from that came the imposition of a contract. That imposition of that contract has set us on a backpedal ever since. Now, what's happened since then is we've had all the things that Margaret, the chapter chair, referred to. Not only have we had retention problems, but we also have, if I may just finish, what we have is recruitment problems. I think you addressed part of that by allowing for the PPL program. I'd just like to close by saying that was a very generous offer. I congratulate you on actually passing that unanimously. However, must tell you, if you want to keep those employees here, you must pay them the market rate.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Next, Allison DeJesus. I'm sorry, I missed Chris. Chris, can you go after Allison?
Sure.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Good evening, city council, mayor, vice mayor. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak in front of you this evening. My name is Allison DeHurst. I am the vice chair of our union, SEIU chapter, and I am a senior librarian at Mitchell Park Library. I grew up in Palo Alto. This community is near and dear to my heart, and I thought I was getting basically my dream job when I was hired on. In the two, going on three years that I have been with the city of Palo Alto, our youth services staff in the last six months has reduced from seven librarians to three. That means we've had to cut back on storytimes, youth-centered programs that have been really loved by the members of this community, and it's been difficult for us to make that transition as more of the staff are asked to pick up the workload that we've, the extra workload that we've had to take on from the departures of our colleagues. This also has an impact on our morale, how we feel about coming to work, as we've seen friends and trusted colleagues with more than 10 years of experience apart. There's an emotional toll that comes with the added stress level of work. I also want to touch on the importance of having affordable choices for healthcare. A lot of the colleagues that I work with in the library department have significant health issues themselves or have children with significant health issues, and having the choice to be able to get the best provider for those different health needs is really important, and that is a thing that I really want to share with all of you, that having that choice, having that be an affordable choice, is really, really very important to not only those people in my department, but I'm sure citywide. So, thank you so much for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Chris Brickner. And apologies again for out of order.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Chris Brickner. Been an employee of the city of Palo Alto for a little over nine years now. When I was hired in September 2009, I thought I won the lottery coming here to the city of Palo Alto. I was so excited. I turned down three job interviews, with one with Santa Clara, PG&E, and the city of Lodi, because I thought there's no better place to be than the city of Palo Alto. Since being here, I've seen a lot of changes happen, and not for the better. In my department, I work as a substation electrician in electric operations. We've had two electrical assistants that have left right before they got apprenticeships to go to the city of Roseville because of cost of living and allowing them to have more money. We've had apprentice who had turned out here, became a journeyman. The week after he received his journeyman card, he left to the city of Roseville. Cost of living, more money. We recently, about a year and a half ago, had a member, a guy that I went through, watched him go through his apprenticeship. He turned out, became a journeyman, became a lead of our department, 16 years here at the city, and he left to go to the city of Lodi for better cost of living and more money. We have a huge problem with retaining employees in electric operations. We're down to the bare bones minimum across the board. Linemen, system operators, substation electricians. The city relies on us to provide the services in emergency situations, and if we don't have the employees to do it and can't retain the employees or recruit employees, then we're going to have major problems here. And you, as councilmembers, are going to have to tell your constituents, "I'm sorry, we can't provide the services that we told you we could provide." In being here and when it comes to emergencies, we have a better response rate than any utility around. When there's outages, we respond. People here, people do the work. I would say there's probably three linemen electricians that live within an hour's time to get here. Other than that, there's nobody else, and those three linemen are seriously getting burned out. I myself, as a substation electrician, I live 36 miles away. It takes me an hour or more to get here before an emergency. If I get called for emergency, it takes me an hour or more. I'm one of the closest ones, and it's sad. There's people that work here that live over in the valley, and it has a hard time getting people to be here to respond to your constituents. I would please ask you that you stop and think about what you're doing for your city employees that go over and beyond for your citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Lynn Krug.
Good evening, city councilmembers, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. Been with the city a long time, 18 years. I no longer live here because I can't afford to. The commute, I'm commuting two hours a day. I only live 20 miles from here. I'm exhausted. My day, my coworkers, my upper-level management can go home at 3:00 and 3:30. I work the hours of the contractor, as does my coworker. All of us, all of our field workers and our people in water quality control, electric, parks, water, gas, wastewater, your enterprise people in SEIU provide safe and conscientious work for you. These are dedicated employees, and I honestly believe you cannot afford to lose any more. The stress level on people, myself included, we're down employees. We have been down on a major project, the university project, to two inspectors from 3 and 4 in the past, for the past nine months. Yet, we are driven by our engineers to complete our work. It is virtually impossible for two people on a project that size with three utilities to accomplish the work of three people by two. Yet, how many other employees here are in the same circumstance? We can't keep this up. Are you going to retain them? I doubt it. I really doubt it. And you're not going to get subcontractors because they're not coming in. The last two people we had to hire for this position, that of inspector, one was an irrigation guy, another guy was a contractor indoor plumber. None of these people have 10 years' experience as needed for this job. My coworkers have started this job that I have now with 13 and 20 years' experience to start this job. What will you get after me? My last thought, please, we don't get social security paid into as Cal-Purs. Do you know that? No social security paid into by Cal-Purs. People think we're rolling in dough. The city does not pay into social security for these employees. So I want that to be news across the board because most people don't know that. So I hope we'll consider these things and know that these employees are dedicated, as am I. I believe in doing great work for this city. 18 years in, I love working, and I love my job. So I hope I can continue to stay here. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Phil Seth and Vice Mayor Fine and all of you. You know, the city went to some trouble to get its valued employees on a more convenient time for their commute. They cut them down from five days a week to four days a week, although they had the same number of hours. Well, you know, you could do the same for these people, only you could have, I presume you're going to build this garage. When you build the garage, build it with showers and toilets up on the top floor, and then you will have a place to put the homeless shelter. Now, this isn't going to bother anybody. It's going to be in the middle of downtown, in the middle of the night. Nobody is going to be knowing that you have homeless people. Nobody. I think it's an easy thing for you to do, and in any case, you should charge people for staying overnight and using the showers and bathrooms. It can be easily enough done. I think you're going to own that property, and I think it's really too bad that on property the city already owns, we can't have something for homeless people that's not going to bother anybody. Suppose you put a sixth floor on. You were going to have a five, but you put a sixth floor on there. Well, you could charge the homeless fund, goodness knows you've got one, you could charge the homeless fund for a sixth of that cost, and that would help you with the money that you have to spend. And I just hope, I don't see why you can't do it, and I just hope that you'll look at that possibility with an open mind because it's doable. It's very doable. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you. And that concludes public comments. Thank you all very much for coming this evening. Can I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second. Move.
Do I have a second? Second by Vice Mayor Fine. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously? That passes unanimously. So we'll now go into closed session, and we'll be back in approximately, it looks like we're about 20 minutes behind, so somewhere around 6:45 to 7 o'clock. And, okay, and thank you once again for coming out and joining us this evening. The council has returned from closed session with no reportable actions. And so let's get started again. So the next item is special orders of the day, and we have a resolution expressing gratitude and appreciation to Rob DeJesus, Rob DeGoose, for two decades of exceptional public service to the Palo Alto community. And, you know, maybe we'll wait a minute for Adrian. Poor Rob's been sitting here for an hour with his family. So I have a resolution of the council of the city of Palo Alto expressing appreciation for the outstanding public service to the Palo Alto community by Robert DeGoose, and it has a lot of fine print and whereas is in here. So I think I'll read this myself because when I first started on council in 2014, Rob was in charge of Parks and Rec, right? And I was on the Parks and Rec Commission, and that's how I got to know Rob. And I may abridge a little bit of this because it's in kind of fine print, but we've got a big page here so you can read it all. So, whereas after two decades of service in the city of Palo Alto, deputy city manager Robert DeGoose is leaving to become city manager in another community. And Rob began his career in Palo Alto as Parks and, as a recreation services coordinator in 2000, so 19 years ago, and worked his way up to supervisor of recreation services, superintendent of recreation services, recreation and youth division manager, recreation and golf division manager, and assistant director of community services department, and then in 2015, was appointed director of community services where he oversaw the city's highly-valued system of parks, open space, recreation, arts, sciences, and human services. And within the community services department, Rob implemented the city's first online payment system for class and camp registration payment, and he initiated an operational analysis of the golf course, which examined the state of golf in the Bay Area, and I remember that, and recommended operational models to ensure sustainability for the city's golf operations. And that, in turn, paved the way for golf course renovation, which we completed this past year. And whereas Rob moved up from director of community services to deputy city manager in 2017, and there, he led a variety of community engagement efforts and assisted with high-profile infrastructure projects such as finishing the $12 million renovation of the golf course, approvals to begin construction of the Palo Alto Junior Museum and Zoo, which is a $25 million reconstruction, and a Herculean effort to negotiate the Pets in Need contract, which has saved the animal shelter, thank you, and which they moved in this past weekend, and operations began this week. So that's, so really, really good stuff. Rob participated in hundreds of community meetings and forums in Palo Alto, worked closely with the community to develop a project safety net and with the school district. Worked directly with the city council and the school board as staff liaison for the city's school liaison committee and the city council's policy and services committee. And whereas with staff changes, Rob stepped up to lead the city's transportation services and manage the staff in the office of transportation, leading mobility and connectivity initiatives, and the city's effort to redesign, what do you call those things? Grade cross things, I think that's what you call those, right? Which is likely to end up being the largest infrastructure project ever done in Palo Alto. And whereas Rob is recognized by his peers and city staff as dependable, professional, and a genuine leader who looks at the big picture and works collaboratively to find understandable and broadly-accepted solutions to complex problems, and is recognized by the Palo Alto community as approachable, open, and thoughtful, with a positive attitude and warm demeanor, let it be resolved, therefore, that the city of, the council of the city of Palo Alto hereby gratefully records and extends its sincere appreciation to Rob DeGoose for his long, dedicated, and exceptional service to the Palo Alto community, and thanks him for his many contributions to improving the quality of life of Palo Alto residents. Introduced in past February 25th, 2019, assuming we pass it right. Thank you very much, Rob. Best of luck in your new career. And... Best of luck in your new career, and, you know, send us a postcard or come visit us from time to time, and it's been great having you here all this time, and I hope everything goes well. With that, do we need to vote on the board for this? Would anybody on the council like to say anything? I think you should hit your light, actually. So, I have a light from Lydia, Tom, actually, everybody. So, Lydia, why don't you go first?
I'll make it very short, but I just want to say thank you very much for your services. I haven't been here long. I know you've been here much more longer than I, but we've all reaped all the benefits that you have put forth in the city and all your hard work. And I am actually very excited for you to be City Manager at Westlake Village, like I had told you previously. Actually, very envious, you know? I can't wait to move to your city one day. But good luck, and congratulations, and thank you.
Tom?
Yeah, I'll keep it short, too, but again, thank you for all your service. I've really enjoyed working with you. I enjoy the programs that you've been in charge of, and just want to wish you best of luck as City Manager. I think they're lucky to have you, and as Eric said, please don't be a stranger, come back and visit.
Adrian?
So, Rob, congratulations, and thank you for your 19 years of service here in Palo Alto. I had the pleasure of working with you through many of the discussions on the rail, great separations. Although we're not done yet, I think you were instrumental in shepherding it forward. And I'll also just note, on all the other things and places and parks and services you touched in the city, I've consistently heard from community members that you were approachable, you were gentle, you listened to them, and you did your absolute best by them for this community. So, that is an honor to you, and I wish you all the best.
Allison?
Rob, I feel like my kids have grown up sort of along with you as you've moved along your career. And, you know, as I said last week at your going-away party, it's, you know, back when we were on a first-name basis, it's been a long time we've worked together. I want to particularly thank you for bringing the community center along at Mitchell Park. You know, when we did the library bond, it was a little, it wasn't straightforward to make sure that that was included, and you always had such a positive attitude, and I think it's turned into such an amazing place for everyone. So, I hope you consider that part of your legacy. Thank you, and best wishes.
Liz?
Well, I think the golf course alone would have done it, Rob, but there are so many other things. But let me concentrate on something else, because next to you is your wife, and three, do you have four children? So, why don't we have this whole family stand up? Because they're the ones who've been giving back while Rob has been here at the office. So, do you mind all standing up? Great. Yay! So, thanks to you, the three children who are here, and your wife, for sharing Rob all these years. And I know that, you know, we work long hours, and you've done that. So, thanks so much, and we'll look forward to hearing feedback from the South after you get there. Thanks again.
When did Rob have time to have kids? We have a couple of members of the public who would like to speak as well, and the first will be Joe Hirsch.
Rob, I'd like to add my appreciation and gratefulness for what you have done for the Cardiac Therapy Foundation, and I'm speaking on its behalf as well. CTF, as we call it, has been in Palo Alto almost 50 years, helping thousands of people contend with and deal with cardiovascular disease and diabetes. We've been at Coverley since January 2003. Rob and his predecessors have recognized the benefits of cardiac therapy program and have supported its tenancy at Coverley. Given the rental cost and the commercial for-profit market, CTF is indeed grateful for having a 16-plus-year tenancy and home at Coverley. We thank not only Rob for his help in making that happen, but also city councils and the city managers. So, we thank them all, and other members of city staff, and various committees that have given us that support, which is really badly needed. But it's always good to have someone supportive as an intermediary between the organization and city staff and city council. And Rob has been there when we've needed it. He's always been generous with his time, and overly generous, even more so, with his support. And our organization is deeply grateful to you, and I say this on behalf of not only the organization, but the thousands of people we have helped deal with their cardiovascular disease and diabetes over the years. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be former Mayor Pat Byrd.
Well, I'd just like to say that I've known Rob for many years, and as the commendations went through all of his exceptional, concrete accomplishments, we see that community service was really his unifying approach in the bulk of his career here. But for Rob, that was a very literal commitment. Rob is committed to community service and has been deeply committed to the service of the community of Palo Alto for this entire career, in a way that is really exceptional. He is somebody who is empathetic to each and every individual that has an involvement in the community, the youth of our community. He has touched so many lives of generations of youth now in our community. And when we had really a crisis in the community and created Project Safety Net, we had to pull together a team, and Rob and Carol Sapecki created this, and for the first year, they did this as virtually a full-time job on top of their full-time jobs. And earlier, it was mentioned about the sacrifices of his family. But Rob was so committed to that need and had the support of his family for something that was literally a huge additional commitment and really carrying a great burden on his shoulders for something that he cared just so deeply about. And that's continued through the Project Safety Net program, and it just is exemplary of someone who treats civic service as a real service commitment in a way that's something that we all admire. So, thank you, Rob.
Michelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you come down to present Rob in person with his framed proclamation, we have one more item we wanted to share. Congresswoman Eschew delivered a certificate for Rob and asked that we present it on her behalf tonight. And with it, she wrote a letter as well. Dear Mr. DeGoos, I just read about your plans to begin a new chapter of public service as City Manager of Westlake Village in Los Angeles, and I want to thank you for your 19 years of service and dedication to the City of Palo Alto. Your responsible stewardship has served the community exceedingly well, and I wish you all my best as you continue your superb work. I've enclosed a congressional certificate of recognition to honor you and your work, and if I can ever be of assistance to you in the future, just let me know. All my best, Anna G. Eschew, Member of Congress.
All right.
Here's the certificate. Certificate of Special Congressional Recognition presented to Rob DeGoos in recognition of outstanding and invaluable service to the community, dated February 1, 2019, signed by Anna G. Eschew, Member of Congress.
Rob, you want to make any remarks?
I would. Thank you, Mayor Philseth, and council members. You know, it's a real honor and privilege to get this resolution. And so, I was sort of reflecting over the weekend on the 19 years, I was reminded of a compliment that was given to me by a community member, a leader in our community who's passed. His name is Ray Bicchetti. Maybe you know him. He's a really tremendous individual, a leader, so smart, and was engaged in so many things. And one time, he gave me this compliment. He said, "Rob, I think that you are the consummate professional citizen." And I never even knew that was really a term, or maybe he coined it, but it's true, in a sense, that I not only have tried very hard to work hard and make a difference in the quality of life for the citizens of this great city, but more than that, I've tried very hard to be part of the community and really listen and really understand what the issues are and own them, that they're my issues as well as the citizens' issues, and then try and solve them with the elected officials and boards and commissions and with the community. And I think in some small way, I hope at least, that that's helped allow us to make some lasting changes for the good together. So, I wanted to mention that, and just that it's an honor and privilege to work with you all and former council members, and thank you, Pat Byrd, for speaking, and Joe Hirsch, and working with the community and my colleagues, hard-working professionals that they are. Palo Alto will always be a special place for me, and I'll feel connected to Palo Alto for the rest of my life, I think, because I've been here for 20 years. And lastly, I want to thank my family, Allison and the kids, for their support and their endurance for the many, many long nights. But thank you again, and I just wish the very best for this fine city. Thank you.
So, with that, we have a plaque, and why don't we all go down there? Is that okay? If you don't mind.
Thanks.
Pat, why don't you come down and get the picture of this?
Yeah.
Right in there? You got the picture on there? It's like you're following me. More space. Keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Oh, nice.
Three, one more.
Great job.
Good luck.
Good job.
Next year's council offsite will be at Rob's house in Westlake Village.
Mayor, we need a motion to approve the resolution.
We need a motion. Gosh, that's crucial. Yeah, sorry. May I have a motion to, moved by Councilmember Niss, may I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Koo, would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously. Okay. With that, we move on to agendas, changes, additions, and deletions, and I think, are there any there or not, right?
We do not have any to recommend.
With that, we move on to city manager comments.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for that really heartfelt send-off, really fitting way to really bid farewell to a truly beloved member of our team. So, let's see, I do have a few items just for the community and council information, primarily heads-up on things upcoming. First, in terms of an upcoming community meeting, actually, on Wednesday of this week on the topic of sea level rise. We do have a public workshop scheduled for Wednesday, February 27, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM at the Palo Alto Arts Center Auditorium. This would be an opportunity for the public to discuss policies related to sea level rise and give an opportunity for some feedback on ongoing staff work that we'll be hopefully bringing to the council hopefully next week, or next month, excuse me, not next week, although next week is next month. Next, in terms of commissioners, looking for commissioners, City Clerk notes that the council is looking for engaged community members to serve on the Human Relations Commission, Library Advisory Commission, and the Storm Water Management Oversight Committee, as well as the Utility Advisory Commission. We have applications available on the City Clerk's website or webpage, cityofpaloalto.org/clerk. Deadline to apply is March 26 at 4:30 PM. Related to the issuance of certificates of participation, the city's financing of the California Avenue parking garage is underway as a part of the 2014 infrastructure plan, with the key step being toward delivery of the public safety building. The COPs, as they're referred to, tentatively go on sale tomorrow, February 26. And Palo Alto residents who submit orders on the sale date will be given first opportunity to purchase approximately up to $38 million, I'm not sure how many residents will have that much cash lying around, tax-exempt and/or taxable COP bonds in two series. The COPs are rated AA+ by Standard &amp; Poor's Global Ratings, the highest possible rating for this type of debt obligation. Additional information and a link to the bond's preliminary official statement can be found on the city's website. I would like to note, Pets in Need is now in town. As of February 19, Pets in Need began public operations of the city's animal shelter. Has been a successful transition, including involvement by Pets in Need staff, city staff from a number of city departments, including, as noted, City Manager's Office, Public Works, Engineering, Public Works Facilities, Police Department, Information Technology, Administrative Services, and Community Services. Certainly not last, but certainly not least, we'd like to acknowledge in particular staff from the IT Department, Cody McCartney, and the Police Department, and Jasmine LeBlanc in CSD for their individual efforts in this transition. Pets in Need is planning a public opening celebration on March 7, so definitely want to note in your calendar. Couple of other items. First, on the upcoming activities from the Human Relations Commission, that the first in a series of community conversation on contemporary issues will begin next Thursday, March 7, 7 to 9 PM at the Palo Alto Arts Center. Each conversation is intended to test our ability to hear and appreciate differences and strengthen communication skills in civil discourse. The first topic in the series will be gender equity. What does it mean here and now? And for more information, please contact our HRC liaison, Minka Van Der Zwag, at 650-463-4953. And finally, a couple of weather-related announcements. First, hopefully everyone got the word that today's Baylands Boardwalk ribbon-cutting was postponed in anticipation of the inclement weather, so we will be looking for another date to reschedule the event, and we'll keep the council and community updated. That noted, the boardwalk is open. Also, on the storm watch, flash flood watch has been issued by the National Weather Service starting this afternoon and expected to run through Thursday morning. Next storm system is expected to bring in moderate to heavy rain throughout the San Francisco Bay and continuing through Tuesday evening with Francisco Bay and continuing through Tuesday evening, with forecast rainfall totals ranging from 1 to 2 inches in Santa Clara Valley and 2 to 5 inches near the coast, with wind gusts as high as 21 miles per hour. San Francisco Creek is forecast to have its highest flow rate this season, around 2,000 cubic feet per minute, but that's well short of any flood concerns. However, local ponding could occur. We have more information on our homepage at cityofpaloalto.org. And one final note related to storm damage, 30-foot section of La Stranquo's Trail in Foothills Park was previously washed out and had been reported due to heavy rain. Fallen trees has now been repaired. Hopefully will remain in good shape through the upcoming storm and is now reopened. So that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you. We now move to oral communications, where we have two speakers. We are now exactly an hour behind schedule, so I'm going to ask the speakers for this item and also for the next item. Please, if you can, try to hold your comments to two minutes. And the first speaker will be Kim Shum.
Good evening, council member and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kim Shum. It's my second time to come to the city council for the same reason. Six weeks ago, I was here to talk about a new bus stop located right next to our driveway. The city has been working with us in the past six weeks to propose an amendment. I really appreciate the effort that Sylvia and also with Lydia's support, they have some proposal to us, but we still have some disagreement. I just wanted to bring some new information for the record. Okay, so just for the record, this is our house, right in front of our house. The driveway is about 50 feet away from the crosswalk. Within this 50 feet, there are two trees and a one fire hydrant. And in the VTA requirement for the bus stop, the required distance for the bus to park there is 55 feet. So I guess this proposed new location violates the rule, for sure. And also, it is definitely not safe for the waiting passengers, who are mostly senior and young kids. So I think we really, really support the Charleston Darrow project, because the goal of this project is safety. So this bus stop is not very safe. We're really proud of being a member of Palo Alto residents here, and we're proud of the democracy in the city. So we really appreciate you giving me the time to present my case, and also, we're not very happy about the fact that the stop was built almost as part of our driveway without, you know, consulting us. So anyway, so I really hope the city will reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker will be Jeb Eddy.
I'm Jeb Eddy, almost 50 years here in Palo Alto, midtown, just up the street from Liz, and I brought a couple of questions. I support Greta, do you? How many of you guys have heard of Greta yet? One. But in 30 seconds, it's going to be all of you. So can we show the screen? Greta is a 16-year-old Swedish teenager.
I think that it was very strange, assuming a foreign animal species were mothers.
This is her TED Talk in Stockholm six weeks ago. She has been diagnosed with Asperger Syndrome. She does not have quite the full spectrum of interactivity that most of us do, and here she has become an international symbol of what you guys have chosen to be your number one priority for the rest of this year. So my main message to you is, thank you. That is a terrific decision that you guys made, and I want to support you as much as I possibly can. Now, Liz may remember, one time I supported you in the form of riding my electric bicycle into the chamber here, but I was told, "Don't put any dirt on the carpet." The other... Her sort of spontaneous leadership has become an international symbol of what's going to become a worldwide student strike in about two and a half weeks, on Friday the 15th. My guess is that hundreds of thousands, maybe millions of high school kids around the world are going to walk out of school, and the message is, "Our generation isn't doing what has to be done." So with your leadership, let's keep going. Talk to your teenagers, if you have any, about what's going to happen on the 15th. A lot of really interesting questions to discuss. Let's work together on fixing climate change.
Thank you. We now move to approval of minutes for February 2nd, 4th, 11th. And approval moved by Councilmember Niss. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Fine. Would you vote on the board, please? Oh, I have a light on from Tom. Is this for this item?
Consent.
No, minutes.
Sorry.
And that passes unanimously. We now move to the consent calendar.
Again, move approval.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Fine. Now, I have three lights on here, and there will be, there are a number of speakers to the public on this item as well. So, Councilmember DeBois.
Yeah, I just want to register a no vote on number 10.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Actually, I wanted to see if we could split 11A to two parts. One part is the architecture, another one is the modular building.
Can we actually do that?
Consent. You can either pull it from consent.
It's on consent.
Modular building.
Modular? Oh, that's the Pets in Need?
I'd like to perhaps ask Councilmember Tanaka to repeat that. I don't think we understood.
Yeah, so split A into two, I mean, 11A to two parts. One is the architecture and one is the modular building. So this is to prove both.
Yeah, it's Pets in Need. There's two. One is the contract, and the other is the building. Can we actually do that, though? It's on consent. We'd have to pull it off consent, right?
From what I understand, you could split votes if you can.
To your discretion.
Yeah, we've never encountered that question on a consent item, but I think at the mayor's discretion, you could split that. They are severable.
I'd prefer to keep it as one item, but if Greg can find a second, can he move to do that?
If you make a ruling that it should stay as one item, then it requires four votes to split it.
I would like to rule that it stays as one item, but if there are four votes to split it, we can do that.
Okay, then I'll just register a no.
So, Councilmember Tanaka, register a no vote on item number 11. Let's see, Councilmember Koo.
Right, I'd like to register no vote on item number 10, number eight, and number nine.
Councilmember Cormac, did you want to speak?
I think you said, I think Councilmember Tanaka might have been registering a no vote on 11A as opposed to 11. And I think you said 11, so I just, for clarity, since we have so many items. That's all. I just wanted to...
I can take a no vote on 11A, I guess.
No, I mean, I believe he registered 11A and you said 11, and I just wanted the minutes to reflect whatever it was he said.
Well, I see.
He was asking to split A. 11 already has two separate items.
Two items. I will register a no vote on item 10 as well. We now have a number of speakers in the, from the public. And you will have two minutes. And the first speaker will be Joe Hirsch, speaking on agenda item number 10.
I'll try to squeeze these into two minutes. I urge you to take item 10 off the consent calendar and reconsider your recent vote to repeal the downtown non-residential development cap. When this item became before you on February 11th, 18 residents urged you not to repeal the non-residential cap, and four people urged you to do so, as you did. Those members and what you then proceeded to do speak loudly for themselves. Four of you support the developers in the community, as opposed to residents who are concerned about the loss of residential rental property in the downtown area. Given that 331,000 square feet have already been approved, according to city staff, I urge you to reverse your decision and not repeal the cap. Wait for the next 19,000 square feet of development to be approved, and then undertake during the moratorium period the required study with both resident and developer input. Why repeal something that will defeat the objective of having more residential rental units in the downtown area and pave the way for more commercial development? It doesn't make sense. Being realistic about what I'm asking for, I asked Councilmember Cormac to do what you told the voters in the run-up to the election last year to do, you would do, namely that you didn't see any reason to remove the cap. But two weeks ago, you did a complete reversal and voted with the pro-development members on council to repeal that longstanding cap, 33 years in the making. I urge you to do another reversal tonight and support taking this item off the consent calendar and vote to keep the cap in place. After all, there is no compelling reason for council to repeal the cap, as it will self-repeal when 19,000 square feet of new non-resident development are approved. Wait for that to happen. Support the required study that will determine, quote, "What regulations would be appropriate in the CD district." Downtown will not be done, as suggested by one council member, but will be subject to new, presumably well-thought-out, new regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Suzanne Keane.
I agree with what Joe just said, and makes a lot of sense, especially if we are putting rental, wanting housing down in that area. It also opens the door for AJ Capital to make another luxury hotel, which will increase congestion, get rid of more residences, and all the things that the residents really don't want. If you need a compromise, I would ask you to look at option three. Apparently, the city staff had three options, and there was an option to let, you know, retail and small offices, but not office buildings, though that may be an answer. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker will be John Geislin.
Good evening, council. When this council voted to end the downtown cap, the Weekly's editorial called it "A Housing Setback." I use stronger language. I call it "A Betrayal of Trust." More than 20 years ago, city leaders foresaw the need to establish a mechanism to reevaluate non-resident development in our downtown after reaching 350,000 square feet of development. Now, on the very cusp of reading, of that, reaching that cap, council has, would remove it entirely, falsely citing that other regulations provide the same protections. They do not. The ordinance calls for a one-year pause in development, not a forever, permanent freeze, as some have mischaracterized it. A pause to consider the best course of action. If you believe we have a real housing crisis, then legislate to promote housing, not offices. If you want this pro-development stance to be your legacy, how people will see your, remember you when you leave the council, then vote to end the cap. If you want your pro-development vote to be the top issue in the next election, a tagline in the campaign against you, then vote to end the cap. However, if you want to join with residents and seek solutions to pressures development puts on residential life in Palo Alto, then vote for a one-year pause in the development and work to find common ground. Vote to keep the cap.
Thank you. Next speaker will be Terry Holzmer.
Dear council members, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight. I would politely encourage you very much to remove the item 10 from the consent calendar and reconsider the city staff alternative number three, which would retain basically the heart of the non-residential cap, while at the same time giving retail businesses the exemptions that they need to make improvements and changes to their businesses. I now emphasize that it is truly important that we look at retaining this cap with these modifications, because with these modifications, businesses can grow and it can make a difference. I would hope that you would add the necessary restrictions as well to AJ Capital for their attempts to change the residential hotel, which they now own, to a luxury hotel for the rich. Last year, thanks to many Palauhtans, Palauhtans stated clearly that the non-residential growth should be controlled, and I think it's time for the council to step up and do what is right, make the modifications to the cap that are necessary to support businesses, but at the same time retain the cap. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nielsen Buchanan.
Counsel, I'd like to add a different line of reason to why you should reconsider item 10. Not too long ago, the city lobbyist made a presentation to you about the upcoming legislation and the whole legislative process. I think he failed to convey importance and urgency to the lobbying effort that needs to be going on to protect Palo Alto. This came home clearly to me last Friday, when I happened to go to Java with Jerry in San Mateo. It was Senator Jerry Hill. I'm not going to quote him exactly, because that's second-hand information for you, but Senator Hill said, "There's a growing gap between the residents, the citizens, the city councils, and the state legislature." He then announced to everyone in the room that he's convening all 25 city managers and mayors on the 15th of March. He is conveying a sense of importance and urgency about what's going on with the legislative process. This is unprecedented legislature, supermajority, ambitious governor, and incredible lobby pushing development beyond any dream of our own plan. So I ask you to pull this off, table it, till city manager and our own mayor can come back from that meeting and get a better sense for all 25 cities are thinking. That's exactly what the lobbyist had suggested, but he suggested to wait till late in the legislative year, and if you didn't like it, then pull your cities together. That is not good advice now and wasn't then. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Greg Welch.
Thank you, council. I would implore you to reconsider your decision to lift the cap. The cap was put in place by prescient predecessors who understood that if you allowed office expansion without necessary adjustment across the community, that you would ultimately create a top-heavy tree that would topple. This tree is a symbol of our city. I worry that with untrammeled office development, without concomitant investment in infrastructure and transportation and in housing, this city is going to cease to exist as it has for generations. We're becoming an office park, and we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars every year polling the residents on their concerns. And loudly and clearly, they come back every year saying, "Housing and traffic." Lifting the cap will only exacerbate those concerns and do nothing to address them. Please reconsider. It's not a permanent lift. It's a pause. It's develop a comprehensive program. It's not anti-growth. It's a prudent way to be intelligent about growth.
Thank you. Bob Moss. Bob Moss.
Thank you, Mayor Philseth and council members. I agree with the previous speakers that you should pull this from the consent calendar and hopefully reject it. It's a really bad idea to eliminate caps on office development downtown. Office uses don't generate tax revenue. They eat it. The downtown area is badly impacted by traffic and parking, mostly caused by office development, which is going on in that area. You've had to put in parking restrictions and sell over 1,000 parking permits to people to park in residential neighborhoods adjacent to downtown because of all of the commercial, primarily office growth. You do not want to encourage or even allow uncapped office growth downtown. That will only make all of the problems worse. It's important that the council look at the benefit of our residents and our community, not of developers, not of landlords, and not of investors in commercial property downtown. You were elected by the people of Palo Alto. We urge you to please take care of the people of Palo Alto and do not remove this office cap.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Herb Borach, speaking to item number eight.
Mayor Philseth and council members, I urge you to remove this item from the consent calendar. It's been two months since you've known that you needed a new city auditor. During that time, council member, council-appointed officers committee and the council could have gone through the process of seeking and hiring an interim auditor, and that's the direction you should still take. The other reasons I described to you in my letter, that's at your places. Since I have a little bit of time left, in response to the members of the public who've spoken about item number 10, the way to achieve their objective is to have a fourth member of the council announce a no vote on item 10 on the consent calendar. You don't have to remove it from the consent calendar to do that. You already have three no votes, and you don't have to devise and have a discussion about some alternative now. The time to have a discussion about the alternative is when the moratorium takes place. Thank you.
Excuse me. With that, we return to council to vote. Would you vote on the board, please? And that passes unanimously with Councilmember Tanaka voting no on item number 11.
11A.
11A, thank you. Councilmember Koo voting no on items 10, 8, and 9. Councilmember DeVois voting no on item 10, and councilmember, and me, voting no on item 10. Councilmember Tanaka, would you care to speak to your no vote?
Sure. So overall, actually, I do like 11A in general. The only part that I had issues with is the modular building. So from a sense, this is kind of like a temporary building while this project is underway. And so I guess, first of all, I didn't understand why we are buying versus renting. To me, it seems like if it's temporary, it makes more sense to rent. The second thing is, it spoke about, the staff report spoke about getting three, three quotes, but none of them were stated. So they said they were informal quotes, but I can't understand why you sent, including the staff report, it would help us make a more informed decision. And the reason why that in particular concerned me is, right now, the cost of this building is roughly $120 per square foot, but just a quick Google search of what a modular building costs per square foot, it's about $60. Actually, it's about $40 to $60. I just used a high number. So this is more than double what a modular building typically costs. So I'm just puzzled by it, and so this is the part that I really object to.
Councilmember Koo, would you care to speak to your no votes?
So on number eight is about the auditor's office. So I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. The auditor's, the auditor's office is an important need, especially in government, to provide the check and balance function. I care about the auditor's office and its integrity, so do the voters in Palo Alto when they voted to include the auditor's office into the government structure for Palo Alto. The staff report indicates staff contacted several consulting companies. Why are the consulting companies not listed in the staff report? Were the following, were the following companies contacted? Tap International, Inc., Soberg Evershan Consulting, Harvey Rose Associates. They also identified the consulting company that is going to be working with us, management partners. Whom in that company is going to be assigned to Palo Alto, and how are their qualifications derived? Will the person have experience with performance audits per the government auditing standards? So, and those are some of the questions that just arises from this consent calendar item, which I think that we should have discussed this further. And to a certain degree, I can accept a comprehensive review of the resources needed to perform duties in, in a variety of manners, as stated in package pages 56 and 57. Which brings me to ask, since city council has an ongoing review of the city's strategy of fiscal stability, including the cost of funding necessary, of funding necessary city employee functions, why is the city council limiting it to this auditor's office only? It's an office of five to six employees. Why not issue a RFP for a comprehensive review of all offices and departments? Lastly, since I have been a council member, I can only recall one CAO meeting that took place that I was aware of, and certainly if there were others, there were no report out to the full council, nor if recommendations, nor were recommendations brought to the full council. So the staff report states, "The review of RFPs and the recommended selection of provider will be routed to CAO committee, and depending on the budget required, it will go back to CAO committee for recommendation, and it will be referred to staff or to, or forwarded to a full council." Why would the important task of reviewing the CAO committee's recommendation be relegated to staff for contract award? This is the auditor's office. It should be a decision by the full council. So I'll iterate again, the auditor's, auditor's office is a demand by the voters in Palo Alto. Therefore, honor the process and make it transparent in obtaining and keeping the government's check and balance in place. Number nine. So the only reason I have objection to this is because the letter that is from Boska states that "Action by your council must be taken promptly. Another paragraph states statutes require action by your council, yet the report states 'staff recommends.'" As I said last time, when this happened with the appointment of councilmember Fine as the alternate to Santa Clara VTA Cities Working Group, it was again a staff recommendation. It was agendized on the consent calendar of December 17th. The bylaws of the VTA Working Group states that the city council of the city must turn it to, must, the city whose turn it is to nominate may nominate up to two of its qualified council members for the VTA Board. Nominees must be affirmed by a majority of nominating, nominating city council. The use of the consent calendar to get the majority of votes seems rather imposing and not giving a choice in the matter, nor is it transparent, and the appointments are staff choices, not council choice. Onto number 10. I've said it before, that I think that there is a false narrative that is being, there's a misunderstood narrative that downtown would still be protected by the 50,000 square feet, square foot annual cap on new office buildings. The operative word is new. And the annual cap, the 50,000 square foot annual cap allows rollover from year to the next, which could mean that it could be 100,000 square foot if the original 50 was not used. Furthermore, the 50-foot square foot annual cap has loopholes, because it is very easy to game the system. When a specialized use, say a bank occupying 20,000 square foot moves, moves into a newly built building, the new building's square footage is trapped, is not, the new building's square footage is tracked, however, the space that the bank left is not, and a office or R&amp;D use can move into the bank's former space. And there's no ongoing connection of tracking the use of the space vacated. You know, I, I would have hoped that with our housing work plan that has been put into place and voted and adopted, that we would be looking at ensuring that the downtown development cap was retained, and we would have a one-year moratorium. It's 365 days. It's not forever. The freeze is not forever, and we would have a chance to have a proper study of the impacts, should we repeal it. So I think that it was a tool that our pre, predecessors.
Are you almost done?
I'm finishing up. And I know that you guys have more to say, but it is a tool that we were given by our predecessors to use, and not to use it now and just repeal is reckless.
Councilmember DeVois, care to speak to your no vote?
Yeah, I just say I got a lot of emails on this one. I think I stopped counting at 40 or so. And I think the community is asking us to take a year to plan the further development of downtown, as we look at the downtown specific plan. And I agree with Councilmember Koo, we're effectively relying on 100,000 square foot downtown cap, since you could roll over any unused square footage. And so with our priorities on traffic and sustainability, I just don't understand what the rush to remove it is.
And, let's see, I don't have anything to add to my comments of a couple of weeks ago on this topic. I want to thank the public for writing in and weighing in on this. People should be aware that our rules are that to remove an item from consent on second reading requires a council majority, so people understand that. Okay. With that, we move on to our first action item of the night. What time is it? It is now 8:20. What time did we start? We started at 7, right? So we're going to, um, I think we'll continue here. So the first action is a public hearing. It is quasi-judicial on 285 Hamilton, and there will be a staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Grandma, and the city planning staff. I've been working with the applicants on the project that's here before you today. So this is 285 Hamilton Avenue, which is across the street from City Hall, across Hamilton Avenue. Just, just so you know, we've been kind of referring to it as the How's Roof Deck for reasons that I'll get into in a couple of minutes. But we're looking at two distinct actions tonight that's on the agenda. The first is a text amendment to allow for rooftop access floor area exception for buildings that are non-compliant facilities, those that are over height and over FAR in the CDC downtown commercial zone. The second is to allow for conditional use permit and architecture review of a roof deck at 285 Hamilton Avenue. So just as a bit of background, the council did conduct a pre-screening application on the subject site back in November of 2017, at which time the, the council provided non-mining feedback to the applicants on their proposal. In October of last year, the PTC took up the text amendment and the CUP and recommended approval for the two of those items. So a bit of a background, as I mentioned, the, the building that you're looking at here in this image right now, across the street, it's what's considered a non-compliant facility. That means that it was established under a different set of regulations, and over time, regulations have changed, and now that the building is no longer in compliance with development standards, so in this case, height and FAR. All, all things being equal, if you're working on a complying building, then roof ducts are permitted use in the downtown zone, as long as they meet the, the development standards that the city council has, in this case, height and FAR, as I mentioned. Couple of basic design features of roof decks, roof decks, you'll have required access, so elevators, stair enclosures, and in this case, they're looking at doing some trellises, tables and chairs, furniture, some grills, as well as some, some plants. Potential issues that could be associated with the use, noise, lighting, and glare in particular. This is a south-facing image of the building, of the How's Building, 285 Hamilton Avenue. This is showing the, the building as well as the, the roof deck, which would occupy kind of a left, the left of center section of the roof. So you can see the safety railing, 42 inches in height above the parapet, as well as the trellis that's proposed to, to kind of screen a section of the, a section of the roof deck. The total height of the building wouldn't actually increase, so at the, the top of the penthouse enclosure, it's up to 82 feet in total height. What's, what's being added to the building is a section that would allow for an elevator enclosure and a stair enclosure, which is below the total height limit. So height doesn't increase, but those areas that are associated with circulation, stairs, and elevators do otherwise add FAR. Here are a couple of the surrounding land uses, you have City Hall to the southeast, a couple of non-residential buildings immediately surrounding the area, restaurants, offices, and, and restaurants, as mentioned. So a couple of key things to focus on with, with the text amendment. First, the construction of the ordinance. So as, as it's currently drafted in your, in the, in the ordinance that we've prepared in the staff report, this would only apply to buildings in the CDC zone that are non-compliant for both height and FAR. As an alternative, there is a way, if there's, if the council chooses to have the ordinance applied to buildings that are simply over FAR, but regardless of their total height, so that would increase the total number of eligible sites considerably. One of the key points of discussion at the PTC meeting was the application of the ordinance to complying buildings, as well as to non-compliant buildings. As currently drafted, it only applies to non-compliant existing buildings. One of the issues that we heard from the community about the, about the text amendment is the residential proximity and then the impacts that might be associated with, with roof decks on adjacent residences. So as currently drafted, there is a 150-foot buffer from any residential zone to any area on a CDC zone parcel where you'd otherwise have a roof deck. And as well as, there is a requirement in this case, as well as in any other case under the text amendment, to have a conditional use permit that's required, that would be publicly noticed and subject to a public hearing, if requested. Briefly, as I mentioned, there's, there's kind of two ways to, that, that staff has really kind of looked at, at doing this text amendment. The first is, as proposed by the applicant, which is to only apply the ordinance to buildings that are both over FAR and over the height limit. That restricts the, based on our analysis, that restricts the application of the ordinance to seven parcels, of those being those that are listed here. So that's 285 Hamilton, the, the subject site, 261 Hamilton Avenue, which is the Burge-Clark Building across the alleyway, which has Sweet Greens as a, as a ground floor tenant in Chanola, the Hotel President, 525 University Avenue, which is the California Bank Building, the tallest building in town, the Nobu Epiphany Hotel Building, 300 Hamilton Avenue, which is across Hamilton, excuse me, across Bryant Street from City Hall, which is the Chase Bank Building, and then one residential mixed-use and commercial building on High Street. The alternative, which isn't in the staff report, but it's a relatively easy change, if, if the council chooses to do so, is to allow for the text amendment to apply to buildings that are over the height limit or over FAR, but not and. And so what that does is, it frees up the number of sites from seven potentially to about 118. So it's a pretty, it would be a pretty dramatic change in terms of the application. So the conditional use permit, as well as the architecture review, are subject to findings, and we've also included a number of conditions that are included in your Record of Land Use Action that deal with specific issues related to both the operation and the appearance of the roof deck at 285 Hamilton. Here's a rendering showing the, the plantings, as well as faintly visible is the glass railing that would be visible from the City Hall Plaza, or MLK Plaza. Environmental review, we've assessed the project relative to the California Environmental Quality Act, found that it's exempt under 15305 and the 15301. And so with that, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but our recommendation is that the council will find the project exempt, introduce the ordinance that's in your staff report for first reading, and adopt it, and also adopt a Record of Land Use Action approving the architecture review and CUP. And so that's it. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to, happy to answer.
At this time, if there's any public comment, we have no comment. In that case, we're seeing no public comment. We return to council for comments, questions, and motions.
Mayor Philseth, would you like to invite disclosures from council?
Why don't we do that? Let's start at that end. Councilmember Tanaka, do you have any disclosures?
It's been probably about a year and a half or so. I met someone named Margarita Goulod. I met someone named Margarita Goulon, through a friend of a friend. We had a brief discussion about the roof deck, but nothing of real substance that wasn't in the record.
Councilmember Koo.
None.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Just to clarify, who owns this property?
Thoit's Brothers.
Okay, excellent. So I did have a discussion with Thoit's Brothers about a week ago, where they talked about their desire to put a rooftop on this building and potentially how it might benefit downtown and other sites as well. But everything is in the report.
I have no disclosures. Councilmember Niss.
I spoke with Judy Kleinberg, who's head of the Chamber of Commerce.
Nothing to disclose?
I had a meeting with a member of Thoit's Brothers. We did not discuss this project.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I believe that the applicant has that presentation as well, if you would care to entertain it.
So let's do that. And let's see, I believe you have 10 minutes, is that right? Usually? Okay.
We thought we'll be quicker than that.
Okay. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor Phil Seth, members of the council, staff. Graham, thanks for all your patience and work on this for about 15 months. My name is John Shank. I do represent the Thoit's Brothers, the owner of 285, also the owner of many buildings, proud owners of many buildings in downtown. The Thoit's family has been committed contributors to the long-term health of downtown for almost 130 years. The proposed amendment has now been through a lot of analysis and a lot of time in the public realm with staff, with the PTC. And the change that did come about that's, I think, fantastic, is the idea that it be applicable to more than just the seven sites that we originally, I'd say, targeted, but didn't intentionally restrict the concept to seven properties. We were just really thinking of 285 Hamilton's unique circumstance in that it had the non-conforming and height issues. The proposed text amendment to Title 18 brings together goals for healthy lifestyles, healthy workplaces, a vibrancy that's synergistic. The goals permeate our comprehensive plan as well as our urban design guidelines. By allowing, and this is what this will do, by allowing ugly and useless commercial roofs to be converted to attractive, desirable, usable, open spaces is logical and in keeping with our collective views on what kind of place we want Palo Alto to be. And that's a first-place place to be. Our CDC zone should facilitate and encourage roof decks. I have an email here tonight, if it's helpful to you all, from the Garden Court Hotel manager confirming that since 500 University has been occupied, which has been over a year, there's not been one single noise complaint from a guest. That roof deck happens to be what is the largest in downtown. And to me, this is a critically valuable fact, is hotel guests are picky. They pay a lot to spend a night in our beautiful downtown, and they're directly across the street from the roof deck that exists there now. We also, I can report, have never had a complaint from a neighbor, which includes the president's hotel, or a member of the public due to noise or light or anything else. Because of these facts, I encourage you to move forward with a modification to condition number five. We also strongly support your efforts to create an attractive housing opportunity downtown. We believe that those who choose to live here do so seeking the vitality of a downtown as their neighbor. A roof deck is wholly compatible with downtown living. Roof decks, where appropriate, as this text amendment identifies, enhances the attractiveness of our downtown to residential. I, for one, would far prefer to live at the Garden Court Hotel if it were a residential or the president's hotel and look out on a roof deck than what is otherwise a commercial roof that generally are not kept well. They're not designed with the idea that anybody would ever even look at them. So tonight, I ask for your resounding support and a yes vote. I encourage you to approve staff's recommended language that would make roof decks more possible on more properties in the downtown, and to tweak approval five to delete the words after the comma, such that sound is to be monitored by the noise ordinance in number six and not by a subjective at-the-property boundary test to be enforced by planning staff. And with all due respect, I don't think it's a burden that planning staff needs to take on as the enforcement of a subjective sound test. I also ask, of course, that you approve the actual project here from Howes, which is the architectural review and the CUP. I know Howes is excited to move forward, and with that, I'll have the architect come up and talk to you about the project specifically.
Good evening. Bob G. Nini from Form 4 Architecture, and I just wanted to make a couple of points about the specific project. Of course, this is the building, 285 Hamilton, right across the street, and you've seen the image now that sort of depicts what it would look like with the roof deck up there. I am a member of Palo Alto's Green Building Advisory Committee, and I'm especially excited that there could be this kind of graphic example of kind of an environmental building strategy right across the street from City Hall Plaza. So I think that's one of the things we talked about a lot in the PTC meeting, about how this could add some vitality to downtown in its small way, and sort of emphasize sort of the greenness of Palo Alto. And also, from an environmental point of view, there's no question that plants soak up a lot more toxins than a bare roof does. So this would be what the public would experience as far as the roof deck goes. This is what's there now, as has been talked about. The only way this can be allowed is with this ordinance, because grandfathered buildings don't have the ability to add any more square footage, and we're only talking about a couple of hundred square feet for the elevator and stair to be able to do this. There's really no other more direct process through the city that would achieve this goal. And finally, this is just an image of what it would look like up on the roof deck. Again, it will be heavily planted, again, so we can take advantage of those opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now return to council for questions, comments, and motions. It's a raging enthusiasm here. Councilmember Koo.
So on this slide over here, you say this is at 285 Hamilton? Yes. So is this going to be open to a public? Because you mentioned a lot about, you know, what we're going to be looking at. The public's looking at a bare rooftop, and now it's really pretty, but is the general public going to be able to use this? Are we going to be able to go visit?
They are not. The way this works structurally is that the elevator for the building is not being redone. The elevator goes to the fifth floor. Part of this improvement is to add a separate elevator or lift from the fifth floor up to the roof, so the access path isn't even direct from the ground floor lobby. And I think it is important, in this text amendment, that these open spaces be thought of as private open spaces, just as in our residential codes, which y'all have been going through. There's the private open spaces, and there's public open spaces. I think most of these, it'll be up to each owner, but I think most of them will, in all likelihood, end up being private open space as opposed to public because of safety issues, noise issues, access issues, putting them into existing buildings.
Right. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
So I guess on your slides at page seven, all of those are private properties, correct? And the ones...
That's correct, yeah.
And the ones that you listed are the ones that are oversized, non-conforming buildings, correct?
In the map that shows the seven, seven eligible sites, seven eligible facilities, yeah. Those are all buildings that are both over FAR and over height, so over the 50-foot height limit, and then over the one-to-one FAR for commercial and two-to-one for mixed use.
And I believe, so it's more than this eight. If we change the ordinance, as you suggest, as you recommend, it will be more than just these non-conforming. It will be, I mean, the ones that are conforming would want to add on, or the new ones, they would build within their FAR? Or does that mean now they can add on also, add extra FAR?
Sure. So just to clarify, as it's currently drafted, the eligible sites would only be the seven that are outside of that 150-foot buffer from the residential zones that are also in CDC, the CDC district downtown, over a height limit and over the FAR limit. The suggestion of changing it to be height or FAR would essentially strike height as being a requirement, you know, for a building to be over the height limit in order for it to be eligible. So you have a couple of, quite a few buildings downtown that are under the height limit but are over FAR, so they might be two-to-one FAR but 30 feet in total height or 40 feet in total height. And so what that would do is take it from being seven sites to about 118 sites in downtown. So that's what... I showed those two different maps for that reason of showing kind of what the change would be.
And on the CUP, why does it need to go to 11 o'clock for an office building? That seems rather late. I mean, I know some of the employees do stay a little bit later, but to 11? Is that something council can choose to reduce the hours?
Absolutely, yeah. That's perfectly within your purview, yeah.
Thanks. Oh, one more. Noise. You know, I know that we have a noise ordinance, and I know that, you know, we've also opened up a lot of, with the new housing regulations, we've also allowed a lot of the new housing to have rooftop gardens, et cetera. So there's going to be a lot of that. Is there a plan for... why, maybe this is for Ed. Is there a plan to bring this back in order to kind of revisit our noise ordinance, to make sure it's a lot tighter, and to figure out how to do enforcement? If there's a complaint at one of these private properties, how do we gain access? And then, if we're going to give them this kind of allowance, is there going to be an ask for TDM measures, perhaps, you know, for them to implement TDM or to join the TMA? Something to that sort? You know, it could increase number of people coming over here, because they might have guests coming over and utilizing their rooftop gardens for seminars, parties?
Well, Graham, feel free to jump in if there's anything specific to note, but I'm not aware of any work plan item to pursue that as an ongoing enhancement to our enforcement activities. So at this point, I would hazard a guess at saying that we would expect status quo to be what would be expected in terms of level of enforcement.
Just to add to Ed's comment, you know, one of the things that John was mentioning is condition number five. So we have two specific conditions that deal with music and noise. One of them is that the project shall at all times adhere to the noise ordinance. The second is more proactive, I guess you could say, in talking about amplified sound, amplified music, and saying, at least with staff's recommendation, that it be inaudible at the property line. So that's something that we felt was, you know, allowing them to achieve their project goals of having a roof deck and having some amplified sound, but also mitigating the potential impact to the surrounding areas.
How do you keep it to the boundary lines?
Just keep it quiet enough so where you can't hear it.
That's how you do it, huh? Okay. So I just have, just want to say something. You know, a lot of these seven properties, they're obviously already non-conforming. So in providing this, and when I look at the list, some of them, if we do approve this, this would be not only double dipping, it'll be three times dipping. For example, Nobu, right, and Epiphany Hotel, they actually have no parking, right? And they are actually contracting out to some other place where they have extra parking to use. As it is, they're oversized, they have no parking, and now if we push through and approve this, it opens it up for more. So if... I find that this is pretty unfair to a lot of the people who are building and building within our conforming codes. And with that, it would also be a spot zoning for me. So it is actually something that I just cannot support, just cannot support, because there's just not enough benefits to the community. It's a private property. They get to double dip. They get to have a lot more, and it's just not right that we push that much impacts onto the surrounding area. Thank you.
Councilmember Niss.
So a few questions. I'm not sure why we'd call it spot zoning. Why don't you speak to that briefly? It doesn't look like spot zoning. It looks like it's zoning covering a number of different buildings.
So I'll just jump in. So as a legal matter, it is not spot zoning. I understand Councilmember Koo to be expressing a policy concern. So that's a matter where council members can have difference of view and opinion.
Okay, thanks. It may be in here somewhere, but how many buildings currently have a rooftop?
It's actually not in there. Buildings that are over the height limit and FAR among that seven, or all across Palo Alto?
No, I just don't know how many buildings downtown have a rooftop.
We didn't study that, unfortunately.
Pardon?
We didn't study that as part of the application.
Okay. But there are several, right?
Yes.
So I don't know what to call the Survey Monkey Building. Sure, it has another name by now. But the president has a really nice rooftop on it. It's a little outdated, but it's a nice enough rooftop. And if you actually go to the top of this very building here, you can look down and see that there are some in what I guess are private buildings as well, where they have, it may be nothing more than moving a few tables and chairs outside, but it really adds to the amenities. And there are several right in this area here. So I think we have perhaps overblown this a bit. Rooftops are really not out of the question. We were just in LA last week. Almost all the buildings that are on Ocean, which are right in the downtown area, have a rooftop. I think all the hotels have a rooftop, as far as I could tell. So I don't think that we are breaking any precedent as far as what is anticipated in a city. And we're not a big city, but we are a city, and we're a small and we think important city. So I'm very enthused about this, and unless you'd like the questioning to go on for some greater length of time, Mr. Mayor, I'd be glad to make a motion.
You may make a motion.
Okay. I would move the recommendation, which is on page one, unpacked at page 112, and I will read most of what it says. A recommendation on the applicant's request for a text amendment to Title 18 of the code to allow for minor increases in height and floor area to provide access to rooftop decks on existing structures in the commercial downtown CDC sub-district, as well as a conditional use permit and architecture review for 26,000 square feet rooftop deck on the roof of the existing commercial building at 285 Hamilton. And I won't go on from there. The rest of the text is in your booklet, and with that, I'll see if I get a second.
Is there a second?
Second amendment.
Second by Vice Mayor Fine. Care to speak further to your motion?
If I may speak just a little more. I've spoken already, but I think that, especially if you work in a building downtown, and especially where, a building where many of the windows don't open to begin with, it's got to really be a pleasure to go outside at lunch. Just stay in your building, take the elevator, go outside at lunch, hopefully eat outside. We see people here on our rooftop plaza, right outside, where people are having lunch. And I find it's a lovely amenity to have. Certainly, if I were in an apartment building, I would think that would be an absolute asset to have, to have a rooftop. So I support this enthusiastically, and I realize the one thing that might happen is the music issue, so I hope that we do carefully track that, and I hope that those who are going to benefit from this will stay cognizant of that concern as well.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, staff, and thank you to the applicants also for presenting. I'll start with why I support this, and then a couple of questions, and maybe... I'll start with why I support this, and then a couple of questions, and maybe councilmember Niss, a few amendments. So one, you know, councilmember Koo, I think you are correct, and these buildings in a way are asking for something more when they're non-conforming buildings. You could call it double dipping, but I think it's important to realize these, these buildings are unlikely to change, and they're non-conforming because our codes have changed over time. And so, you know, we either have a non-conforming building with AC units and concrete on top, or we have a non-conforming building in the downtown with a roof deck on top. And I think the latter is preferable. Some folks, you know, at the, excuse me, at our pre-screening and some other conversations I've had, have worried about impacts on future residential or commercial uses. As councilmember Niss just mentioned, I think this improves the condition for future uses in the downtown. And now a couple of questions. So as, as the staff recommendation is right now, is this the and or the or condition?
It's the and with the more restrictive construction.
Okay. So that's the one amendment, councilmember Niss, I'd like to see.
Say it once more.
So that there are two ways we can do this. One is that you only get these new changes if you're a non-conforming building and you're over 50 height, 50 feet height. The other way we can do it is you're a non-conforming building or you're over 50 feet. And the reasoning there is that there are actually many non-conforming buildings under 50 feet. And so if you look at the two maps, I would rather have both sets.
Okay.
So will you accept an amendment that we use the or language?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you like put that in here?
No, 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 that's why I just asked. And, and so the thing, and the reasoning here, and I assume we'll have a bit of a debate here about this, I actually think it's silly that we would allow these roof decks for non-conforming and above 50 feet, and not for those below 50 feet. In a way, if you think about it, like, the ones that are over 50 feet and are non-conforming are more non-conforming than the ones that are under 50 feet. So we're, so we're dealing in a weird abstract space here, but, but I think the purpose of this change that I'm asking for is that if you're a non-conforming building, you're unlikely to change, and I think a roof deck is better than the current condition. On the noise and light issues, I also have councilmember Koo's question about how we would measure amplified music at the property line. And I'm just wondering, can staff, like, tell me, are you just guys just going to wait for complaints? Or are you going to, like, set up some, like, NFL-style, you know, field goal kicker screen, but for sound?
It would be complaint-driven.
Okay.
And it would be, and it's, it's a part of our code enforcement process is, you know, we receive a complaint and we would investigate.
Okay. Do we have any current complaints about roof decks in downtown or other parts of the city?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, thank you. And I guess just the last question, and I'll put this to my colleagues, maybe one way we can address some of this. Would it be possible to put a CUP requirement that if there are, you know, one or multiple noise complaints of this roof deck, it could trigger some kind of, like, director's hearing or something like that? Or some kind of hearing at the city?
One second, let me speak with—
Thank you.
Molly.
After that, yeah.
Sticking back through some more recent CUPs where this kind of question has come up where, you know, if there's an ongoing issue, you know, that's kind of voiced at the time of the, of the CUP approval, for example, we have included a, in some cases, or when the council has approved, a condition that gets at that intent, which is that if there's ongoing issues related to the, you know, the performance of the CUP and the performance of the tenant or applicant, that there can be a director's review of the CUP, usually at the director's discretion, is how we've done it in the past. So it's not necessarily after one complaint or after two complaints, but after the director's made the, in their judgment, the determination that the CUP needs to be reviewed, then they have the ability to, to do that, and that can be through a public, public hearing process.
So I think, given that this is a new change, and that given the scope is, you know, somewhat large across the downtown, that would be advisable. And so councilmember Niss, this is my last comment, would you accept an amendment that we work along those lines, that if there are repeated complaints, the director at his, at their discretion may have a review of the CUP?
Yeah, I did mention that.
Okay. Let's, let's put that in there as well, see if it's accepted. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Fine, this is Jessica, the clerk. Could you repeat those two for me, just for the record? I want to make sure it's correct in the motion.
So as, as a condition in the CUP, at the director's discretion, upon multiple noise complaints, there may be—
Discretion, not discretion.
The noise can be a distraction, though. At the director's discretion, upon multiple complaints, the director may trigger a hearing on the CUP. And I, I will walk down to staff to make sure this is good.
Vice Mayor Fine. Just a point of clarification. So in amending the CUP, this is the CUP specifically for 285 Hamilton. So I guess the, the question is, would you prefer the text amendment include this sort of review?
Yes. Yes. I want it for all of them.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Cormac.
So I guess there are overall questions, and then there are questions specific to the project. So just a few overall, I'm going to start with a comment, frankly. I'm still confused. We had this conversation before about what's a roof deck and what's a garden. And, you know, I think there's reasons to, frankly, I'm more, more welcoming of a garden than I would be of a roof deck for a variety of reasons, some of which are incorporated in our priorities. Okay. Question for staff. If we were to apply this in other commercial areas, such as California Avenue, what would that look like? How many buildings? The option currently on the table with the—
It's a good question. We didn't look at it as a part of the review of this text amendment. We were looking specifically at University Avenue, which was the applicant's request, you know, for the, for the, for the text amendment.
There's not quite as many of them.
Yep. As Jody was indicating, there's not quite as many, due to the age, most likely, of downtown versus Cal Ave. There aren't as many buildings that are over FAR. And you also have a, a large number of newer buildings that are below the height limit as well. So it, it's kind of an apples-to-oranges sort of comparison.
Okay, but there would be some buildings on California Avenue, okay, that this might apply to. So I'm just going to let my colleagues know that I'm, I'm probably not going to be ready to support something that just addresses downtown. So this is sort of, am I inferring correctly that if it's a complying facility, the reason this does not apply to them is that they would be able to have a roof deck slash garden within the height limit?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, I just had to extract that one. Okay, so that's on the, on the overall level. Again, I, I think if we're going to do this, and this is a big change, and in general, I'm supportive of using the roofs, especially if they're, you know, there's some greenery up there. I want it to be applicable across the, across the city. Specific questions. How do I reconcile A4.1, which shows not one drop of green, with what the applicant presented this evening, pages two and seven? Right? So the, the staff report indicates all artificial plants, and then it says that there's going to be some vegetation on the edges. But then we look at what the applicant provided this evening, and pages two and seven have trees and, you know, I can't tell on seven if this is fake or real in there. But what's, which one should I be considering for, for this specific application? The, the big one or the little one?
So that, that was a, a question that we had as well with the plant, with the plans that you have in place. And so as a, as a component of the draft record of land use action, we did add a condition that said that the, that the, the trees that are proposed on the roof deck need to be living, regionally indigenous and drought tolerant, indigenous to the Bay Area. So it would be living, breathing plant material.
Hopefully not. Okay, so, all right, that was unclear. So we should go with what's tonight, not what's in here. I would also say that, you know, I, I've sort of always envisioned these a little bit as a respite area. And to be frank, this one looks a lot like a work area. It's set up with, you know, tables, as if you could have sort of a conference. So frankly, it feels a little bit more like office space as designed than a roof deck garden, which is a place you would go to take a break and hopefully have your lunch or whatever. So I just have some concerns about that. Another question that, I'm sorry, there's a penthouse, like, people are living on top of this? When we say penthouse, it's just the top level? Okay, so that's just my—
Mechanical penthouse, yeah.
Okay. It's like, it looks like it's mechanical, who's living up there? Okay. You know, in general, it appears that this specific project would be, I think, unlikely to disturb or disrupt others pending these, you know, changes we might make to the time. But I'm not, I'm not comfortable tonight granting exceptions only in the downtown area. And I, I guess with the, the vast addition of greenery, I'm, I'm willing to be more comfortable with this specific project. But again, I would like it to be in the full context. And that concludes my remarks.
So did, did this project go to the ARB?
No, it did not. We considered the architecture review of it to be a minor enough addition, so that, no, we didn't bring it to the, bring it to the board. We left it at the staff level.
I mean, okay. It's been two years, but, so you're asking council to make the architectural findings?
That's correct, yeah.
And given the scope of the modified motion, which is, I get all these buildings, correct? It seems to be a large part of the downtown core.
That's correct. The 118, roughly.
118 buildings?
Correct.
Why, why would this be exempt from an EIR? It seems pretty extensive.
So when we're looking at the CEQA, we're looking at a number of things with regards to light, regards to noise, you know, the kinds of impacts that might, you know, impact the environment. In this case, it's also associated with just the amount of FAR that's needed to get up to the roof deck. So the floor area exception that's entitled by the, the text amendment is always going to be of a fairly minor amount. So you're not adding additional parking. It's not the kind of thing that we would see as being necessary to, to seek further study through initial study or an EIR.
So what about the floor area, the deck itself?
Of the total deck, it's 2,600 square feet of decking. And then about, otherwise, 157 of it would otherwise be considered gross floor area, and that's the portion that we're exempting. That's just the area for the, the elevator and the stair.
But when you look at these 110 buildings, you're saying they'd all be 2,600 square feet?
Oh, no, 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 no. So with, with the house roof deck, the, the roof deck proper, the area that they're enclosing for the roof deck is 2,600.
Yeah, so I guess I'm saying that the, the ordinance itself should be subject to an EIR.
I guess there's one additional component to that, which is that any applicant, future applicant, that would be seeking to utilize this exception would be going through a discretionary application at that time. So as a CUP is required, and with each one of those, we'd be evaluating it for impacts that are, that are specific to the, to the use.
So I have some questions from 2017, or, or the study session 2018, and thank you for including those in the back of the packet. On package 138, I asked a question about how the railings could be not visible, but also at the edge, and the response was they'll be made out of glass. That's in the CUP itself. I'm wondering if in the ordinance, is there any requirement that the railings not be visible?
We did not include that, but it's within your purview to, to discuss that as a part of the architecture review findings.
Okay. So, so I'll have some amendments to propose when I get to the end. Also on that same page, I asked about the intensification of use. And I guess that, yeah, the response was basically to look at the hours, the amplification of sound, and then the actual size of the deck. And so, you know, this has been a long-time project. I mean, it was not initiated by the city, and I think we talked back in 2017 that probably wouldn't have been a priority for staff time. And it's kind of a creative way to ask for an exception for one project by changing the ordinances. Back then, we had a lot of discussion about noise, and now the noise ordinance is difficult to enforce. I think council was pretty, pretty split on this project. I would say that I have been getting complaints from residents, both downtown and the Cal Ave area, about noise from businesses. And so, you know, as we kind of change our housing zoning to encourage more residents in these downtown areas, I do think it's something we need to take seriously. And this ordinance is specifically about non-compliant buildings. You know, there's a provision here that there's 150-foot residential buffer, but that, that doesn't really apply to you if you're living downtown. So I asked that question. I think the response on packet page 137 was that people will get a mailer, and they can come complain about a project if they live near it. I just don't think that's good enough. And again, I think we're, we're trying to encourage residential development downtown. So I'll try some friendly amendments. So to the, to the ordinance itself, I'd like to see us, you know, basically require that railings not be visible from across the street. And then that could be left up to the CUP process. In this case, they're made out of glass. If they wanted to use some other material, they could set them back from the edge.
Before we talked about accepting that, I, I don't know whether that's possible or not. It may be that, that by the time you get, I don't have any visuals here, it may be, but by, let me use this as a visual. By the time the railings aren't visible, you might have a little tiny thing inside the, the rooftop.
Well, again, these are at the edge, but they're glass, so that's one approach. President Hotel has a terrace that's not visible from the street. It's, it's set back.
Well, actually, the sightlines on this project show that they're not visible.
Yep.
I guess my question would be, what is there about railings that's unattractive?
Again, I think we're trying, these are non-compliant buildings that are already over our zoning, so trying to make them appear not to be even more so. And I also think, in terms of noise potentially, if the railings are set back, that would help.
I think this, this all depends on, are you thinking of Hamilton Avenue looking up at the house building?
This is for the ordinance, not, not the CUP.
Right, but is that the one—
I'm talking about generally across the city, I'm not talking about this project.
I'm, I'm, I'm going to say no to that one because it's, it's, it's just sounding rather vague to me. And I think attractive railings, especially because I think you're going to see some, some kind of small tree or some kind of plantings that are up there as well, that I think will be attractive. So—
Your amendment is not accepted as a friendly amendment. Would you like to propose it?
Maybe councilmember Fine can find something to persuade me.
Would you like to propose it as an unfriendly amendment?
He appears not to be, no. So why don't you—
See if I got a second for this amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Care to speak to your amendment?
So if you want to deal with this, and then I could continue my comments, or?
So councilmembers, at the appropriate time, the staff does have some comments just about making clear and enforceable standards.
Yeah, so staff has a way they'd like to word this. I think the intent, I think you understand the intent.
So we, we do have a potential option that you may want to entertain. This is something that was put into the housing ordinance language, related to roof decks as well. And it does talk about, "All fixtures shall not intersect a plane measured at 45-degree angle from the edge of the building." So basically, the top of the building, you would do a 45-degree angle in any— do a 45-degree angle, and any railing would have to be under that sort of angle, and that would be very objective standard.
So that's, that's exactly what I was trying to communicate. So if we could modify this to say that it would be consistent with the housing ordinance in terms of railings.
Yeah. And just, just so you're clear, with, with 285, what that would effectively do, you have a 42-inch railing right now, and it's setback three feet from the building parapet edge. So they would need to move it in six inches additionally. So that'd be the, the impact.
Right. But again, I want to be clear. We're talking about a general ordinance, and now we're talking about a specific CUP. I think, I think there's some value to having consistency in our ordinances for residential and commercial. So I don't know if the clerk could, could update that to reflect. So I'm done. Eric, if you want to talk to it?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll speak briefly to my second here. Yeah, you know, one of the things that I like about the 285 Hamilton project is that it in fact doesn't raise the height of the building because there's already a penthouse up there. And from the drawings, you can't see anything on top of the, you can't see the guardrails from the, from the street level, right? And, you know, most of the discussion we've had has been on the merits of roof decks for the tenants of buildings. I understand that, right? But roof decks are already legal in Palo Alto.
They just read what we...
Okay. The issue before us tonight, the issue before us tonight is that adding a roof deck may exceed building height and FAR limits, right? And that's, that's the reason this is in front of us, because roof decks are perfectly legal, you know, already and, right? And, you know, the FAR thing, it doesn't bother me very much because I see FAR as at least partially and maybe almost all about sort of limiting massing and the, the size of building you can put on a, a given, a given parcel. And the roof deck doesn't really add to that, right? Particularly if you can't see it from the ground. But we've had no discussion at all about height limits. And once you can see the rail...
And I will incorporate it.
Ah. I'm going to stop speaking now since this, this has been accepted as a friendly amendment. Okay?
I think it's saying the same thing.
Right.
Got to find a harder one.
The clarity helped. Thank you, guys. So the other, so switching to the CUP, and again, thinking about the discussions we've had in the past.
Tell us what page you're on.
We're going to page 130. I think, again, most of the concerns that I remember hearing and that I have are around intensification of use and noise. And so I think, I think the first paragraph, the use authorization, I would like to see it specify that it's for use only by occupants and employees. So that, right now, it says it'll be limited by the building occupants and their employees. But that seems fairly broad to me. And so what I'm thinking about is a situation like in Menlo Park where the place gets rented out.
May I have staff the question?
Yep.
Steph, is, is your understanding that no one other than somebody who either lives in the building or works in the building can go on the roof?
It'd be...
Is that what we're reading under youth, under page 130, use authorization?
The intent, and I apologize, I'll apologize if it's not clear, but the intent is for people that work there as well as their guests could occupy the building, or could occupy the roof deck, excuse me.
So they can invite somebody to lunch or whatever?
So they can?
They could.
They can to a party?
They can, yes. They would, they would be allowed to.
So what was your point again, Tom?
So I actually wanted to make it only, only for use by employees.
Oh, see, you want only employees to be able to use it.
Right, less of a, of an entertainment location or just a garden or outdoor space.
Yeah, no. You're going to have to get a second for that.
So...
So we have another unfriendly amendment. Is there a second for that? Second by councilmember Koo. Care to speak further to your amendment?
No, I think I've made the point on this one.
Councilmember Koo, would you care to speak to your second?
As these buildings, as you open these things up, the rooftops and so forth, like I mentioned before, the impacts could be there. And with a CUP, if we're, no, this is the record of land use. But I think that, you know, it would be good just to limit it for their employees, just to decrease as much impacts as possible to nearby, to, to the neighbors.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would encourage my colleagues to oppose this amendment. I think it is reasonable for guests of office occupants and employees to go to roof decks. I was recently at one on, what is it? I guess, Hamilton near Cowper. There's an office building there. I actually don't know what office, well, I don't know if it's a PC, non-conform or whatever. It has an off, a roof deck on top, and they hosted a small get-together on top, and I was a guest of the building. And it was a nice way to be downtown.
Anybody else care to speak to the amendment? I think we should wait until councilmember Niss returns to vote on this, right? Councilmember Cormac.
I'll just ask a question on this. So let's just imagine there, the caterer, right? Is the caterer an occupant or an employee? We would have to amend this if it was so, you know, okay. So right now, this means they couldn't, you want to say contractors or something in there, just to make it a little more clear?
That, yeah, that's the intent. People...
Okay, it's up to you. It's your amendment.
Paid by, paid by the employer. No, I meant contractor, any, any kind of use. It would just be not to have loud parties at night, basically.
Okay.
Is that basically intent is to avoid sort of partings and parties and meetings up there?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cormac.
Excellent. Another question. Is there a limit on the number of people that can be on this specific at one time? Did I miss that somewhere in the report? I did miss it. If you could just remind me.
Yeah, it's, there is, and it's set by the building code. I don't know the exact number, but it's, it's specific. And it's actually one of the reasons why there's the need for an additional stair, which is triggering the FAR, that's needing to be exempted. So it's, it's all kind of tied in together.
Okay.
But it's 15, 15 square feet per, per occupant, so just doing the math, it's...
Looks like people are nodding, maybe the applicant. Okay, all right, thank you.
Seeing no further comments, would you vote on the amendment, please? And the amendment fails on a 4-3 basis with councilmembers DuBois, Philseth, and Koo voting for, and councilmembers Cormac, Niss, Fine, and Tanaka voting against. Councilmember DuBois, do you have further?
Two, two more quick ones, both on this page 130. So, and I'll, I'll just try to make it quick. So again, right now, the permitted hours are 6:00 AM till 11:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. Again, I see this as an office amenity. It's been how, how it's been pitched to us. So I would propose modifying that to 8:00 to 5:00, Monday to, Monday through Friday. And again, I would just remind my colleagues about all that housing zoning changes we made. Now we're trying to create housing downtown, permitting this to 11:00 PM basically every day of the week, just, and expanding it to over 100 buildings at the same time. I just don't think we understand the impacts.
May I respond?
As the maker of the motion, you, do you accept, do you accept this as a friendly amendment?
No, no, I, no, this, I doubt many people are going to be up there at 8:00 AM to begin with.
6:00 AM. It's 6:00 AM.
Oh, 6:00 AM. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the six. Okay, the 8:00 AM is fine. But the 5:00 PM, you know, we have nice nights here in the summer. You might like to actually go up and sit and, you know...
Just something other than 11?
Well, I would, I'll tell you what, I could deal with 8:00 or 9:00 because I don't think most people go to bed before 8:00 or 9:00.
How about 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM?
Okay, let's, let's, I'll accept that. And, and with the caveat that is not in the ordinance but is in the record, that if it proves that the use beyond 8:00 PM really has value, then I, I think we should look at it again.
This is just in the CUP, yeah?
Yes.
Right. And I also said Monday, Monday to, Monday through Friday.
Nobody gets to work on Saturday? I mean, are you going to kick them off the roof if it's Saturday?
You want it to be at seven days a week?
I, I think...
I would compromise if you accept the hours.
Yeah, I'll accept the hours.
Okay, so...
Okay, but I have a second over here, and I may not, I may not agree.
So the proposal is 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Sunday.
Yes. Now it's, now it's like being every day.
Councilmember Vice Mayor Fine, do you accept this?
Yeah, I, I did think the 6:00 AM was a little too much. I would have said seven, but I think eight's fine. And if anybody's complaining about somebody being up on a roof deck at 7:30, God bless them. I think 8:00 PM was a little harsh, actually, and I would have suggested 10:00 PM. As I just mentioned, the one I was at the other day, I think the event started at 7:30 and probably went till like 9:00, something like that. And we had dinner up there and were chatting. I mean, it's 9:30 now.
Well, let's see if we can negotiate 9:00 o'clock.
I, I think 10:00 is still reasonable. You know, our downtown is alive until past then.
This is not for restaurant use.
They're supposed to go patronize bars and restaurants.
Councilmember Fine, could we agree on a 9:00?
I think 9:00 PM, fine, if we can.
Can you agree on that?
I'll take it.
Let's compromise. Okay.
Thank you.
I would support that for 1:00 PM. It's late, but 5:00 PM is free for activity.
Right, way too early. Okay, we've actually agreed on this one, right?
Thank you. Yeah, I have one last one, which is the next line down.
You've done pretty well so far.
So I, again, well, this is in the CUP for this particular one. So the ordinance does...
Hey, hang on one second. Instead of the Monday through Sunday, could we say daily or every day? Otherwise, somebody's going to say, I, I just know someone will question Monday through Sunday.
So the ordinance doesn't really speak to amplified audio, right?
No, it speaks to noise.
No, it, it does. We have, we have two, two conditions. So one of them is condition of approval number five, amplified music. And then we also have condition number six, which is about noise.
This is in the CUP, though.
It's in the CUP, correct.
Yeah, in the ordinance.
I'm sorry, in the ordinance, no, I apologize. No, there's nothing, there's nothing to talk about.
So it's just silent on, on that?
Yeah, the standard noise ordinance would apply absent that. However, the text amendment does require a CUP in each instance.
So it might be concerned, it's amplified audio. So my motion would be basically to delete number five on packet page 130. So it'd be no, no amplified audio.
Well, it does say not beyond the property boundaries, I think.
That's what it says. I mean, we talked about this before. We talked about enforcement, difficulties around enforcement. And we were talking about, you know, seven buildings.
I'm not enthused about this, so you need a second.
Right. So, again, I'll just be brief. I, I think we've greatly expanded this ordinance tonight. You know, when I look at this map, I think of amplified audio. I just think, again, we should, we should start out without it. So that, that's why I made the motion.
Councilmember DuBois, would you mind restating your amendment so that the clerk can get it?
Just to remove...
Whatever number it is.
Yeah, condition of approval number five, not the...
So you're not wanting a condition about amplified noise?
Okay, so amplified, amplified audio is not permitted, I guess. It should be changed to read that.
So just no amplified noise is what you're requesting?
Right.
Oh, well, wait a second here, okay.
What do we end up saying for the housing ordinance? Yes, so it's replace section five to say no amplified audio?
We said, so we have the noise levels shall not exceed Title IX, which is our standard noise ordinance. We also said that amplified equipment shall be prohibited.
So again, I would just like to make it consistent with what we did recently on how rooftop gardens.
So then it would be the use of sound amplifying equipment shall be prohibited.
I'm not sure I'm going to support that as, as described, so.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. So I think I've spoken enough of you.
Councilmember Cormac, care to speak to your second?
Yeah, no, I, I think it's absolutely reasonable for them to be consistent, consistent with the housing one. You know, I've participated in some of these, and it's a small enough space. You should be able to do it. Even I could probably do it without a microphone if you need to, you know, thank someone at a going-away party. I'm comfortable with that.
Actually, did, I was clubbing with the word music over audio. So is audio what you want or music what you want?
I think staff read it or fixing it.
Good. Vice Mayor Fine.
So I, I think the standard we actually have in here is probably good enough. You can have amplified music, and if nobody can hear it, that's cool. We also, if you look at letter D in here, if there are multiple noise complaints, we are going to trigger a new CUP hearing. I think it's kind of unambitious to say that we would have roof decks without any amplification. I'll use the example again of the one I was at last week. There were speakers, and it was windy, and they used a small little voice box to project. As, as we heard earlier from staff, we've never heard a complaint from, about noise on a roof deck in Palo Alto, to their knowledge.
I'll speak briefly to it. So in my mind, the, the original language as written in, in number five basically says you can have a presenter with PowerPoints up there and a, and a mic, right? But you can't have a band, okay? So I live four blocks from University Avenue, okay? Now, I understand the idea that if you're going to have a band, we'll have a band that's so quiet that, an amplified band that's so quiet you can't hear it before it's beyond the property line. So I live four blocks from, from University Avenue. If there is a band in Litton Plaza, we can hear it, okay? Including at 9:00 o'clock on a Saturday night, right? So, so I, I, I think it's a legitimate concern to worry about putting a band on top of, on top of one of these things. I feel much less, much less concerned about somebody doing an amplified presentation with a mic and, and PowerPoints. With that, would you vote on the amendment, please? And the amendment passes with councilmembers Cormac, DuBois, Philseth, and Koo in favor, and councilmembers Niss, Tanaka, and Vice Mayor Fine opposed.
I'm not going to make a motion on this last one, but I'd almost like to vote on a separately. So first, I, you can probably tell I'm not in support of this ordinance in general in terms of expanding...
Oh, I never would have guessed it.
...capabilities of non-compliant buildings. But I, I was prepared to support the original motion, which would apply to buildings that exceeded both FAR in height as, as a test, kind of the seven buildings. But with, with over 100 buildings, I'm concerned that we really don't have an idea of the impacts. I think we're going to impact a lot more residents. So I'm going to stop... I think we're gonna impact a lot more residents. So I'm gonna stop there. I appreciate you guys letting me make these motions, but if somebody else wants to move to restore A back to the original, I would certainly support that.
Councilmember Koo.
Just a question. So are there fees associated with this, impact fees or building fees or recovery fees?
There might be a small increase in the impact fees that are associated with 157 or 159 square feet. But beyond that, it'd be, when they apply for the building permit, there are fees that are applicable for the review.
Does that fee go to the parks, parks and rec or the park bundle or just general fund or?
There goes, a small segment of it would for.
But it's really small?
But it's, we're talking about an increase of 159 square feet. It's, you know, it's the size of an elevator shaft and a stair enclosure, so it is relatively pretty small.
And you're addressing particularly 285 Hamilton?
Correct, yeah.
But other buildings might, they're also more or less that size?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. So amendment E here says for the height limit exceptions, all fixtures should not intersect a plane at 45 degrees. When we say fixtures, does that also apply to trellises, elevator shafts, all that kind of stuff?
We could say fixtures and structures to make it more clear, if you'd like it to be.
Okay. If the maker and second are okay with it, I'd, I'd feel more comfortable with that language, right? Fixtures and structures, I think.
You're trying to get away beyond just railings to, might be other things.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I really like about the house building is you can't see, you can't see all this stuff from, from, from the street. I think, you know, we haven't had any discussion of height limits, right?
Adrian says okay.
Adrian says okay, okay.
Just one quick question. Do we understand how any of these projects may be lit, actually? I'm just wondering if they do like necessarily put lamps right at the edge or something, facing inwards, obviously, but. I'm sorry, could you, could you restate that one more? So the mayor is proposing to add this change for the height limit exceptions, all fixtures and structures. I guess fixtures would be lamps, structures that he's adding would be things like the secondary elevator, staircases, stuff like that? Correct. And so you want those out of sight, too? Okay, well, I'll accept it, I guess.
Thanks. I think, so now, at this point, I'm speaking to the main motion, which is, you know, I see absolutely no enthusiasm among residents to increase heights on buildings that are already over height limits in town. You know, I interpret this as saying, well, you can't tell, right? That it's taller. So I think that's quite important, actually. Okay. And I hope, I hope it doesn't come back later with, somebody comes up with a building that sort of gets out of that, but okay. Councilmember Cormac, did you?
I'm sorry, do we have an amendment on the floor? I'm just trying to figure out what we're speaking to at the current moment.
I believe we're speaking to the main motion now since the last amendment was accepted.
Okay, I thought Councilmember DuBois had made a suggestion about splitting things. Had, had we addressed that?
Actually, my suggestion was deleting C, which would go back to the original staff motion. I said if anybody else was interested in that, they could make the motion.
Well, I, okay, I, can I make a, let's see, substitute motion or motion to split or?
We, we don't have, we don't have a motion here, so, so if somebody wants to make a motion or, for an amendment here, so, or a substitute motion.
We have, the main motion is on the floor, right?
The main motion's on the floor.
Okay, so then I'd be making a substitute motion because this is not an amendment? And splitting a, splitting these is considered a substitute motion?
No, under our rules, it's a request to the chair and the rules provide that if an item, if there's a request and an item can be split, that it should be.
Okay, well, then I'm gonna make a request of the chair that we split this motion, separating the ordinance from the specific project. And so I guess I can figure out what all these letters are while you're thinking about it. So.
I'm not averse to doing that, but how would that work?
So the ordinance could be approved if the findings are not made for the CUP. But the other way couldn't happen. The project could not be approved without the ordinance.
Okay, all right, fine, then it all goes together. I understand.
Yes, you could split them, but then you would, you'd vote on the ordinance first.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna withdraw that then. I guess I am gonna make a substitute motion, which is I would like to continue this and have staff come back with an ordinance that includes the other zones within the city that would be subject to this. Under both scenarios, the, the seven scenario with just the over 50, over 50, with, with the two scenarios, the and and the or, and how it applies to everything in the city, that would be my substitute motion, if there is a second.
Council, is, is there a second for this?
I'm, I'm not gonna second this, but if you desire this, I would encourage you to add it as direction to staff.
I think as the, as the maker, you can add that direction and the staff can then write us an informational report back to tell us how they would incorporate that. So that means that you've, you've, you've given a, you've given instructions, it's simply not in, in the motion.
Okay, I'm seeing no second.
I see no second for your motion.
So then I will, as a friendly amendment, ask that we direct staff to come back. What was the wording that you were suggesting? And describe that, describe the impact of this ordinance, should it be extended to other areas within the city?
Is that accepted? You're asking how many buildings would affect in the city if, if you made it citywide? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, I'm, I'm asking why it's only related to downtown and why if this is, you know, something valuable, we wouldn't extend it to other locations within the city.
I, I wouldn't accept to come back and, and. I suggest we pass this tonight, obviously. But then what you're also saying is you'd like the staff to come back and describe the impact of this, if it should pass tonight, on everything else in the city other than the downtown. Am I correct?
Yes, and maybe describe the impact is the part that's hanging us up. So outline the options for this ordinance to be extended to other areas in the city.
I think it's fine. Let's look at staff. Can you do that?
We, we certainly can. I think it just depends on what the anticipated timeframe would be that you'd want us to return with a, with a report and, and what the parameters would be if you're looking at CalAB, as you were kind of mentioning previously, or is it something that's?
I don't think it's critical.
Yeah, not a rush. I just kind of want this for the other places so we can get a sense of, you know, what, what it would look like. So three months. So that's not, that's not enough?
I think, I think at staff's convenience, I think, or some, is what you want, right?
All right, at staff's, at staff's convenience, as long as it's in 2019.
Or thereabouts.
You okay with that?
Not a high priority to me, but I'll accept it to help us move along.
Go to vote.
With that, seeing no other lights, would you vote on the motion? Wait a second, I see one from Vice Mayor Fine. Oh, okay. And that passes five to two with councilmembers DuBois and Koo dissenting.
All that and you still voted no. Tom, you know, you're, you're beginning to inoculate me. Do you know how many of those will ever do one of these? You gotta have, you gotta have Amazons. You know what it's like? It's like what we're hearing about the downtown. You think all of a sudden we were going to grow like this. Gotta go home?
Okay, we have one more item. Let's see. How many people in the, in the audience are planning to speak to this item? Six so far. I'm gonna suggest we take a five-minute break at this point and we'll come back and, and we'll look at, we'll discuss Birch Street.
Birch Street is coming up. That could be a long item tonight or it could be not, or maybe a short item.
It will always be a long item. It will always be a long item.
Also discussed, parts of it was discussed in the closed session. So we'll see how long this goes. I think this is something that our, our mayor's gonna figure out. He has a lot to figure out, how long this meeting's gonna go and also his state of the city address, which is coming up just on March the 5th. We will not be broadcasting that, though. That'll be at the Mitchell Park Community Center. And we will see what is in the mind of Mayor Philseth as he will, is sort of the CEO and he's a high-tech guy and he's a cyclist and he lives near a university.
Yeah.
Find out a lot about.
You, you can go by his house, I go by his house every day on the way to school, too.
Our intern, John Anderson.
Since we're not supposed to take up new items after 10:00 o'clock and it's not quite 10:00, so. I think we will, so the next item and the last action item on the agenda is a discussion around 3350 Birch Street. And welcome, Sunny.
Good evening. Kristin O'Kane with Community Services and to my right is Sunny Tong, who's our new real estate manager in our administrative services department. So I'm just gonna briefly go through this presentation and if anyone has any questions, we can take it at the end. So this item is potential acquisition of a portion of 3350 Birch Street. And the stack, staff recommendation is that City Council authorize the city manager or designee to submit an offer to purchase property located at 3350 Birch Street. The owner of this property is Pacific Bell Telephone Company and it was a larger parcel, about 1.65 acres, that has recently been subdivided. And the portion of the property that is now for sale is 0.64 acres. And you can see that at the bottom of the image there, the part that has been divided and is for sale. This property that is for sale is zoned as public facilities and has a comp plan designation of major institutions' special facilities. The property went on the open market in January of this year and it is listed without a price at this time. We are expecting that offers will be received by the seller in February, late February, which I know is now, is late February, but by the end of the month in 2019. So with that, I wanted to discuss some related policy that we have in the Parks Trails Natural Open Space and Recreation Master Plan, as well as the 2030 Comp Plan, that would support the staff recommendation. The first is that the Parks Master Plan identifies acquiring parkland in high-need areas as a high priority. And in addition, both the Parks Master Plan and the 2030 Comp Plan have policies related to acquiring parkland using the National Recreation and Park Association's standard as a guide of four acres per parkland or two acres of neighborhood parkland or, and two acres of district parkland per thousand residents. The guide also includes a minimum neighborhood park size of two acres per site and a maximum service area of a half-mile walking distance, meaning that residents should be able to walk to a neighborhood park within a half-mile radius. So with that, I wanted to. So with that, I wanted to focus a little bit on Bullware Park, which is right across the street from the property that is for sale. Bullware Park is a 1.5-acre park in the Ventura neighborhood. It consists of two playgrounds, a basketball court, picnic areas, barbecues, and benches. And while this is considered a neighborhood park, and so I wanted to point out that the people who live in the Ventura neighborhood, while they do have a park within walking distance, it does not meet the two-acre standard that the National Park Association recommends. I also wanted to point out some other parks in proximity to this property, all generally within a one-mile walking distance to Bullware Park with the, and all approximately ranging in size from .3 acres to about 14 acres. And Stanford Palo Alto Field is about one, or I'm sorry, six acres in size. So switching now to the resource impact of potentially acquiring this property. So there are some existing funding sources. Parkland development impact fees, which are for new non-residential development. And that fund has a balance of $2.7 million after some planned park improvements that we already have identified in our capital improvement plan. There's also the parkland dedication fees, which is regulated by the Quimby Act. And this is for new residential subdivisions and this has a balance of $1.2 million after planned park improvements. The parkland dedication fees, we would need to further research that to ensure that those funds could be used in this neighborhood because typically those funds are only usable in the area of the city where the impact occurred. There are some other potential funding sources that we would need to further investigate, which could include general fund, capital or operating, as well as other city assets. That being said, we also have funding needs for further improvement of the site. So what we're talking about today is just acquiring the property, but further investment would need to be on the site to improve it, to make it a usable park space. So with that, I'd like to close again with the staff recommendation to authorize the city manager or designee to submit an offer to purchase a portion of the property located at 3350 Birch Street. And both Sunny and I are here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. We'll now go to the public and I understand there are eight speakers. Let me ask a question, or a brief question first. Can we actually, is, I mean, there are only a few days left in February 2019. Is this within our, within our ability?
So it's our understanding that they'll be taking offers on February 28th.
Okay. In that case, the first speaker will be Jonathan Brown and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Jonathan Brown. I'm the Chair of the Ventura Parks Committee and proud member of the Ventura Neighborhood Association. But I speak this evening as a longtime citizen of Palo Alto. Three minutes, which is what we thought we were gonna get. To tell you why the city should buy 3350 Birch and expand Bullware Park is an apt metaphor for how quickly my kids have grown. We did a lot of that growing in the park. We live on Fernando, right across the street. We hosted birthday parties in August and January. The kids learned to ride bicycles around Bullware Park's loop path. We served imaginary food, a whole lot of which was ice cream, under the redwood trees and in the little kids' play area. And we brought real food to neighborhood potlucks where we met new neighbors and visited old. I coached my daughter's AYSO soccer teams there. We threw footballs and frisbees. We watched ducks nesting in the creek. We felt the wind rush by as we swung to new heights on the big kids' playground swings. In the sand! Somehow that proved hardest of all to leave behind at the end of the day. And while that telltale grittiness on the porch was not always welcome, I never regretted a single second that I spent with my kids in Bullware Park. The time we spent together at the park has helped my wife and I develop our kids into kind, thoughtful, nature-loving people who are connected to their community. Now, it is the park's turn to grow. These moments are fleeting and it might be easy to give in to competing priorities. I myself had to skip coaching my son's basketball practice to be here tonight, but the park is our baby. What it becomes will be the legacy of this council. I urge the city in the strongest terms to purchase the portion of 3350 Birch that is for sale in order to expand Bullware Park. The land is zoned public facility, a designation reserved for recreational facilities and community-serving uses and a designation that must be factored into fair-price negotiations. A bigger Bullware Park will create a better Bullware Park and one that all Palo Altons, but especially underserved and densely housed Venturaans will love, even more than the current version. It represents a unique opportunity to fulfill the Palo Alto Parks Master Plan's directive to expand parkland inventory. The city must not waver. Like time spent with my kids in the park, you must harbor no regrets. Let's get this done together. We stand by, ready to help and support the city at this critical moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Scott Van Dyne.
Mayor Phil Seff and council members. I've lived in Ventura neighborhood for, well, since 2001 and in Palo Alto for a number of years before that. I've raised two kids there and one dog. And I've used, used the park, lots of fond memories of the, the Bullware Park. And have looked longingly at the unkempt field across the street for many years and would be very pleased to see it become part of the park and managed appropriately. And I encourage the city to take the steps necessary to do that. And I know that the, the number of kids in the neighborhood has been increasing significantly and expected to increase more given the housing plans locally. I know this because I, I'm the guy that hands out the candy at Halloween and there's been a huge, every year is more, dozens of throngs of kids going around. So please, please do the right thing and follow through with the recommendation to purchase and upgrade the, this, the Birch Street land. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Victoria Dobber. Next, Becky Sanders. And could, our practice in the, in the chambers here, I realize there are not very many of us here and so forth, but our practice is not to applaud or make noise after people speak, so please respect that.
Be merciful. This is their first time here. So anyway, I'm very excited that we had a lot of people say they wanted to come tonight. They were watching from home. I got some text messages. I mean, you don't have to believe me, but people said they were waiting and waiting and then they didn't come because it was just too late. So that's pretty sad because I, anyway. So the young lady just left is expecting a baby. April 2nd is her due date. She played in that park all her life and she's excited to push her baby around in that park. And so I was excited that she could be here, but she had to leave because she was exhausted. So I'm excited. You know, we've been really pushing for this and I am so appreciative to staff for just bearing, you know, taking up the standard and going, "Yeah, we want this too and if we can make this happen, let's do it." You know, I have a phobia of upzoning, right? And 2755 is still in my nightmares of giving that PF property a zone, a checkbox. So I don't know, I just think if you can keep this PF, then it has to keep the property values down. For, I mean, it won't be as competitive for people to build like a shopping mall there. So anyway, thank you so much. Really, I'm looking forward to this process going forward and we will help. I mean, if we can have a bake sale, whatever Ventura can do to help, sell magazine subscriptions, we wanna be there by your side because I know it's expensive and naturally the seller wants to make as much money as possible. I totally get that. So free market, but we have some free spirits in Ventura, so we're here and we really are excited to work with you. Thank you very much. Thank you, staff.
Thank you. Next, Waldemar Keschmarski.
Thank you for pronouncing this so accurately. I live very close by and general statement, parks are good, even if they are on top of the buildings. This particular one is very busy. I have two dogs. I'm there three times a day, 7:00 in the morning, midday, and late in the evening, and I'm never alone. It's, it's one of the best utilized parks in, in the city. And because this park supports activity of children, adults, and people with dogs like me, they are not always compatible within the space. It's, it's just slightly too small. And therefore, you know, some kids are attracted to the dogs, but some parents are a little less so. Would be nice if this park could grow a little bit so it would have more dedicated areas for, for different activities. Of course additionally, you are planning on increasing the housing in the area. It is a very busy park right now and we are planning on putting some additional housing where the Fries is at the moment. Also, we, day-to-day getting more and more people working in what used to be shops in the area and now they are startups. And we are very happy to have young, new neighbors that play in our park, but you know, they increase the, the use of the park. And finally, with the plans for developing Fries area and this beautiful Park Boulevard, it would be very nice anchoring on another side going from California Avenue along Park Boulevard to some nice destination on another side. So this park could play a role for larger neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Neera Narang.
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to be here and this is actually my first meeting. And I'm the troublemaker who is encouraging people to applaud at the back. We're really, really excited about the opportunity to keep this as PF zoning and to add to our neighborhood. I am the neighbor of all of these folks. I'm a homeowner on Fernando Avenue and I have two young children, age two and a half and almost five. We live at the park. This is where I have met many of the neighbors sitting behind me. And I just want to acknowledge Shayna and Danny who are over there and also have a young kiddo at home. They were too shy to come up and speak. But this is also where I met Jonathan Brown, whose son, who also was raised at that park, now babysits my kids. So this, it's just a wonderful neighborhood and really adding to this already vital and busy and very lovely used public space, I think would enhance our fabulous area. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that, we return to council and I will move the staff recommendation. Seconded by Councilmember Koo. And just briefly, I think this piece of land would be a great addition to Bullware Park. And I'm delighted it's come on the market and if it can be acquired at a fair price, I think we should be on it. Councilmember Koo.
I agree with everything you said and I'm just as excited as all of you.
Vice Mayor Fine.
Thank you very much for the report and thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Also completely in support of the motion. This has been something we've heard about from, for quite a long time from community members, especially in Ventura, but in other parts of the city as well actually, when they see the opportunity. Just a couple of quick questions. So I saw in the report that CBRE is marking it as available for commercial, industrial, and retail. Is that possible now?
Yeah, it's currently zoned PF, but then a buyer would have the potential opportunity to rezone the property, of course with council's approval. But it's also a risky venture to take on that might not happen as well too. But it's all a possibility.
Okay, thank you. And then there was one quick note in here about potential remediation due to lead. Is that what I saw? Approximately for, minimum of 400K in funding needed for site improvements. Additional required for road removal and restoration. Sorry, I didn't mention lead. I was just misthinking. Is that removal of the road and restoration of that area? Or could, would it be restoration of the, of the actual land itself?
So it would, could be both. So there's the actual .64-acre piece of land that would require probably some restoration. But then there is another proposal to turn that road potentially into a cul-de-sac in front of the homes and then close and restore the rest of the road so there would be continuity between Bullware Park and this piece of property.
Right. And I think if we were to assume ownership, that would make sense. Just from my colleagues, I quickly calculated in Google Maps, it looks like maybe 10,000 to 12,000 square feet, but that's super rough. But I think if we do acquire this, that would be the right move. With that, I would encourage us to support this motion.
Seeing no- Yep.
So I know you're all here and very enthusiastic about this. And we're probably not the only people who would like that piece of land and enthusiastic about it. But we will certainly move with great diligence and in order to enable staff to, to do something permanently with it. But I don't want to throw any cold water on anyone, but I do also know that it's a desirable piece of land. So just keep that in mind and you know, you might say good words while you're over there and we'll, we'll hope it comes to pass.
Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, just, just generally, what's the forecasted cost to actually implement our Parks and Rec Plan more generally?
To implement the entire Parks Plan, I think we did an estimate about a year and a half ago and it's, it's very large and I, I don't know if I recall the number exactly, but just a reminder to that, the Parks Master Plan is a 20-year plan and the intent was not to adopt it and say, "We will absolutely accomplish everything in the plan." So it was an aspirational plan. But there are some very big-ticket items in there. For example, Cubberly Master Plan is in there, the 10 and a half acre site at the, near the golf course is in there. Restrooms, dog parks, et cetera.
I think you're starting to answer my next question, which is, so we have this development impact fees and the dedication fees. If we didn't do this, what are other things that we would spend that money on?
Well, again, the, the big one that comes to mind for me is the 10 and a half acre property. So we're currently in this fiscal year, we have a CIP to start doing public engagement to come up with a plan for that site. But then we currently don't have funding to then implement a plan for that 10 and a half acres. We also have additional dog parks, we have additional park restrooms, we have the 7.7 acres at Foothill Park. So there's, there's quite a few things in the Parks Master Plan.
Any part of Cubberly that was Parks?
Pardon me?
If, if part of the Cubberly redevelopment was open space or parkland, would it qualify? Possibly.
Likely, yes. There's also a community center impact fee that could help with the Cubberly funding as well. Potentially, I'm not sure the balance right now.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Tanaka.
Yeah, actually, Councilmember DuBois asked some of the questions I was gonna ask. So I just wanted to say that, thank you for your work and thank you for members of the public coming out. I'm actually very excited about this project as well, so I hope it actually happens.
Seeing no further lights and comments, would you vote on the motion, please? And that passes unanimously and thank you very much. With that, we have reached the end of our regular action agenda. And is there any state and federal legislation update? Seeing none, we move on to council member questions, comments, and announcements. And I have lights from council members DuBois and Cormac and Niss. Councilmember DuBois.
Yeah, I don't know if the clerk can pull up the PowerPoint. I have just 20 slides I wanted to share with you guys.
And a couple of motions to go along with it.
Yeah, so on Saturday, I went to an event that was billed as an old-fashioned barn raising. So on Saturday, I went to an event that was billed as an old-fashioned barn raising where community members kicked off a fiber-to-the-home installation in Los Altos Hills. And they kind of ceremoniously micro-trenched about 300 feet of fiber optic cable and connected five homes. And there's about another 150 homes that are targeted. It was incredibly low cost and quick and there was a lot of excitement. It was kind of fun to go watch. I went in the morning and then I went at the end of the day to kind of see how far they got. And then slide number two, I just wanted to say, went to the Avenida Scala this weekend. It was a good success, it was really well attended. And the building looks really great. If you get a chance, you should take a walk through it.
That's a garage. Councilmember Cormac.
I just wanted to echo a councilmember DuBois's mention of the Avenida event where they thanked the city profusely for the significant contributions we made to the renovation. I will also note, I did walk out on their roof deck and was able to see across to City Hall via the 285 Hamilton. So it was like an entire roof deck weekend.
Have they got a roof deck?
Avenida has, I don't know if it's technically a roof deck, but you walk outside on the third floor. I'm not sure if it exactly qualifies. Anyway, you were able to go outside and there was space.
Councilmember Niss.
So I'm delighted to tell you I'll be going to the National League of Cities week after next. It begins on essentially the 9th of March. But I'm sorry to say that I am going by myself. I'm going to miss having colleagues with me this year.
Thank you for representing us.
So while I'm there.
Whip those FAA guy.
Pardon?
Say hello to the FAA for us.
While I'm there, I will not be visiting the FAA this year and have no intention of doing that. But you're free to come along, Michelle. So I will be visiting with other elected, so let me know if you have particular concerns or there are things that you'd like me to bring back to DC. That's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thanks very much. And seeing no further lights, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Could, could I say one more thing?
Be nice.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe this is the earliest we have been out in probably three years.
You know, there was some bunch of discussion on, on the rooftop decks issue, but you know, the rest, not too controversial. I think, you know, not a lot of argument about Rob and, right?
Mr. Mayor, I think you're too modest in running an efficient meeting. I think council should be congratulated.
It must be that.